All right, ladies and gentlemen, calling the Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting to Order for Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. Secretary, please call the roll.
Nadleman?
Here.
Francie?
Here.
McGurran?
Here.
Belzer?
Here.
Block? Stevens?
Absent.
Carlberg?
Here.
Fishman?
Here.
Coleman?
Here. We have a quorum. Brings us up to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the Agenda. I did notice on our dais a revised agenda, but we couldn't figure out what was revised on it, so staff let us know.
We had an inaccurate date on the agenda, so we just updated it, and we also added the results of the August Planning Commission meeting that went through the governing body is on there as well.
Okay. Commissioner Block?
My move for approval of tonight's agenda as revised?
Second. Second Commissioner McGurran, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda as revised? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. The agenda is approved. Brings us up to one set of minutes from the August 26, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Are there any revisions that anyone wants to make to those minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Block?
My move for approval of the minutes from the August 26 Planning Commission Regular Session Meeting?
Second.
Second Commissioner Belzer, all in favor of approving the minutes from August 26, 2025? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Minutes are approved. One case is continued to October 28, 2025. That is Case 9825, Johnson County Pioneer Library, request for approval of a revised final development plan located north of Town Center Drive and west of Row Avenue. Brings us to the consent agenda. We have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on the consent agenda tonight. Would any commissioners like to pull any of these items for further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Block?
My move for approval of tonight's consent agenda?
Second.
Second Commissioner Belzer, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Against, nay. Consent agenda is approved. That brings us to new business. The commission calls Case 106-25, Regent's Park, request for approval of a rezoning from RP3 Planned Cluster Attached Residential to RP2 Planned Cluster Detached Residential and Preliminary Development Plan located south of 135th Street and west of Kenneth Road. And who is going to go ahead?
Carrie Kinnell, Senior Planner. This is Case 106-25. The applicant is requesting approval of rezoning 4.66 acres south of 137th Street from Planned Cluster Attached Residential or RP3 to Planned Cluster Detached Residential or RP2 and revised preliminary development plan for the entire Regent's Park development and construction of detached single-family residential structures on the subject property, and that consists of seven lots. The zoned mixed-use development district that is already approved previously does not change with this proposal, and the proposed plan would simply rezone lots 15 through 21. That's seven lots with 14 twin villa attached units. The proposed preliminary development plan reduces the number of twin villas from 46 units to 32 units and increases the total number of single-family units from 18 units to 25. The most recently approved case for the Regent's Park development was Case 06-25, Regent's Park Rezoning and Preliminary Development Plan, in which there was a request for rezoning and preliminary development for 12.4 acres south of 137th Street. This is directly west to the subject property of today's case, from RP3 to RP2, for the construction, again, of detached, single-family residential structures on lots served by the Guilford and Springdale cul-de-sacs, directly adjacent to the west. I'll pull that up and show you the current zoning at the top of this slide, if you can see that, and then below that, the proposed zoning area is outlined in blue. For this proposal, no elevations, traffic, parking, or landscaping is proposed to change from the previously approved plans. There is a requested deviation per Section 16-39 of the LDO, in which side yards between buildings may be reduced to zero when the city approves adequate open space for the project. And between buildings, the applicant is requesting a reduced side yard setback for all seven yard lots with the proposed RP2 zoned section from the standard 10-foot side yard to 7.5 feet. The same deviation was granted with prior case 06-25, and staff is in support of this deviation request. As far as the golden criteria that we considered with this case, we considered the character of the neighborhood, the zoning and uses of the properties nearby, the suitability of the subject property for uses to which it's been restricted. Specifically, the subject property is suitable to be rezoned from RP3 to RP2, as the RP2 zoning would also be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The RP2 zoning allows a smaller residential lot to encourage clustering of single-family dwelling units while encouraging green space preservation and neighborhood amenities. As far as the extent to which removal of the restrictions would detrimentally affect nearby properties, construction of a single-family detached lot versus single-family attached lots following a rezoning approval is not anticipated to detrimentally affect the nearby properties, and once the construction is complete, there would be no increase in impact. This property has been undeveloped since the original approved plan for Regent's Park in 2020 with Case 103-20. Metal Lane, however, has been constructed, the cul-de-sac that serves these properties, and utilities, stormwater detention have all been installed, but no other improvements have been made at this time. For relative gain in public health and safety, compared to hardship imposed if it would be denied, we, the property would remain zoned RP3 and allow attached cluster housing as initially approved, and the Leewood Comprehensive Plan designates the subject property as medium-density residential. The designation aligns with the intended character of the RP2 zoning district, and rezoning to an RP2 classification would support the housing objective listed in the comprehensive plan by providing home ownership alternatives to the standard large lot residential subdivision, and the first directive under that objective is to encourage clustering of homes in areas indicated as medium and high density, and provide opportunities for amenities such as common areas, preservation of natural features, walking trails, and view corridors. By providing the single-family residential with this proposal for the area of Regent's Park, along with twin villas and multifamily options within the RP3 and MXD zoning districts, a range of housing options are available, and staff does recommend approval of the proposed plan with the 28 stipulations listed in the staff report. And available for questions if you have any?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Neuer. Any questions for staff? One question from me. Do you have any, did the developer provide any illustrations of what the housing would look like?
It would be consistent with what was approved previously with the other elevations in the proposed, in the approved Case 0625. So I didn't include those in the staff report. They did not. This was mainly rezoning only and no other changes to any of the other districts.
Okay, thank you. All right, any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Invite the applicant to come forward, please. Sir, welcome. Please state your name and address for our record.
Good evening. My name's Tim Tucker, T-I-M-T-U-C-K-E-R. I'm with Phelps Engineering. In addition to myself, Scott Underwood with Landby Grand is also here. He's the developer.
Could you please give us your business address?
Oh, 1270 North Winchester, Olathe, Kansas. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
I really don't have anything else to add. This is similar, exactly the same as we did a few months ago, just immediately adjacent to it, where we've, in this case, we're taking seven duplex lots and turning them into seven single-family lots, so a reduction of seven doors. Stipulations are the same as was on the previous application we did, with the exception, we didn't ask for a deviation on the front yard setback, but it has the same side yard setback request and the same request on cul-de-sacs from, for an 80% reduction from 100-foot width to 80, 80-foot width. We've read the stipulations, 1 through 28, and are in agreement with them. Other than that, be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Block?
Tim, maybe just more color as to the reason for the request. I asked, we've got another case coming up right after this one, and they're proposing all twin duplex, or twin villas, and you're getting rid of them. So I guess I'm, what are you seeing that that's requiring this, or the applicant is seeing that's requiring this change?
Yeah, my understanding from what he had told me, he's got interest in the duplexes, but right now, he's got, I think, two finished duplexes and three that are in the works, but there's nothing else out there. So part of the pullback is that they're the only ones out there, so it's kind of like, and there's a lot, there's been a lot of demand for that, that single family, since Aventino's kind of coming to an end, and now they're kind of jumping over that way. So he's hoping to get some momentum going around there to create some energy to help, help with the duplexes.
And just so I understand, the duplex are in Phase 1, a little bit further to the east of this?
It's actually right, yeah, yes, yeah.
Those are the ones where there's a model or something?
Remainder to the east there on that cul-de-sac, or that, that street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you.
This case does require a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this Case 106-25?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Block? Saying none, I move to close the public hearing. Commissioner Block?
Second.
Second Commissioner McGurran, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Public hearing is closed. That brings us up to discussion on this case. Any commissioners like to have any discussion on the case? Get a motion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Belzer?
I would be happy to make a motion. Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Regent's Park rezoning of 4.6 acres from Planned Cluster Attached Residential District RP3 to Planned Cluster Detached Residential District RP2 and revised preliminary development plan, Case Number PC 106-25.
Thank you, Commissioner Belzer.
Second.
Second Commissioner McGurran. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving Case 10625? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Case is passed and recommended for approval to the governing body. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Commission now calls Case 4725, Chadwick Place, Villas of Chadwick, request for approval of a rezoning from SDNCR, Planned Neighborhood Commercial Retail District, SDO, Planned Office District, and AG, Agricultural District, to RP3 Planned Cluster Attached Residential District, Preliminary Plan, Preliminary Platt, located south of 135th Street and east of Chadwick Street. Ms. Neuer, you have this one as well. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant requests approval of Case 47-25, a rezoning, preliminary plan, and preliminary plat for a 62-unit, 31-lot residential development located on 15.62 acres at the corner, the northeast corner of 137th and Chadwick. The applicant proposes single-family attached twin villas and rezoning of the properties from SDNCR, SDO, and AG to RP3 Planned Cluster Attached Residential. There is one deviation request with this proposal. The side setback that is required by LDO is 30 feet. This proposal would reduce that side setback to 20 feet. And, let's see, we'll go through some of the other performance criteria. Each dwelling unit is about 6,200 square feet. 6,000 is required by the LDO. Open space provided is 50.8% required by the LDO is 30%. There's a five-foot sidewalk provided along the side, each side of the road, as per required by the LDO. Each unit has two or three attached garages plus additional parking in the driveways, and all the other performance criteria of note have been met with this proposal. There's the subject area. You can see it's bounded by 135th Street to the north, Chadwick to the west, 137th to the south, and agricultural, and RP3 with Regent's Park to the east. There's the current zoning, and then the zoning which would be, if approved, would be RP3 for this district, for this subject park property. To the north is zoned MXD, to the south, zoned RP2 with single-family across 137th Street. To the west, it's zoned RP3, and to the east, RP3 as well, adjacent to the subject property, and then agricultural to the east up in that northeast corner. There's, on the plat itself, I don't have a slide showing the plat, but I wanted to run through some of those just really quickly. There's a private tract, or a private drive for Track E, pedestrian access, a 3.5-foot sidewalk with Track D. Common spaces provided in Track B, and Track A provides stormwater detention at the corner of Chadwick and 137th, and the southwest corner. Right away, and utility easements are provided in the plat as well for public streets, pedestrian access, sanitary sewer utilities. There's also an easement that's being vacated with this plat for sanitary sewer, and then within the common detention areas, there's drainage easements, and then access easements at the entrances as well as the private drives. Also included is a water easement along the front yard setbacks of generally west of the structures that are located in lots 10 through 14. So the property is currently undeveloped and partially treed, partially utilized as agricultural land. Vehicular access to the site is located on the west at Chadwick and on the south at 137th Street. Another connection for future access is provided, located east of the subject property across the currently zoned AG undeveloped property up in that, on the northeast corner, adjacent to the northeast corner of the subject property, along 135th Street. Pedestrian access to the site is via a 5-foot sidewalk connecting to the existing sidewalk on Chadwick, from the existing sidewalk on 137th and existing sidewalk on 135th. At the southeast corner of the site, the community gathering area also has a pedestrian, has pedestrian access, seating, and a pergola. Each dwelling unit is accessed via, via a shared driveway or singular driveway. And with this plan, they provided, the applicant provided, a stormwater study which was reviewed by Public Works, and that memo is included in your packet as well. For landscaping, a preliminary landscape plan does provide 166 shade trees, 55 evergreen trees, 48 bushes that can, consist of a mix of deciduous and evergreens, and 23 existing trees along Chadwick will be preserved with this proposal. There are 50 street trees required by ordinance, and 52 street trees have been provided. Approximately 22-foot wide berm located on the north property line includes evergreens and deciduous species, which provide a visual and noise buffer along 135th Street. Elevations are not required by the LDO for preliminary plan. They did provide some elevations in their plans as well as some renderings. Oh, there's your landscape plan, and here's your renderings. Elevations are provided within, and we're expected to see the materials that are listed in your staff report, but those will be finalized in the, in the final development plan. One more thing, the maximum height of structures is 33 feet 8 inches. The allowable height is 40 feet per the LDO. The deviations requested, I'll repeat those one more time, 30 feet, from 30 feet required by the LDO to 20 feet for side yards, and then interior lot line setback between buildings can be reduced to zero when the city approves adequate open space for the project, and staff are supportive of both deviations in this case. There was an interact meeting that was held on May 12, 2025, in which there's a summary included in your packet. The highlights of that are that three residents did attend that meeting. The applicant answered questions regarding tree preservation, stormwater, implications of RP3 zoning here, home ownership, density, home price, and the depth of the detention area. The three attendees supported the attached residential use over mixed use for this area according to that summary of the meeting. Staff can consider the eight golden factors with this application, including the character of the neighborhood, which nearby is generally medium-density residential, with lower-density residential adjacent to the south, and mixed use with a variety of medium-density, a single-family attached housing and commercial retail in the vicinity to the north across 135th Street. Zoning and uses of the properties nearby, which include agricultural and office zoning, this is zoned RP3, and, I'm sorry, the Regent's Park development to the east and the Tuscany Piazza condominiums to the west are both single-family attached residential developments zoned RP3. The property north of Regent's Park abutting this development and fronting 135th Street is zoned MXD, and adjacent to the north is zoned RP2. The suitability for which the property and uses for which it has been restricted, the rezoning for medium-density residential as RP3 is suitable, as, as staff has determined, and combining these five properties for a larger development, as well as current market demand, may increase the likelihood that the area will be constructed as proposed. The restrictions, the extent to which the removal of restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property was also considered, and staff does not consider this, this application detrimental to affecting nearby properties. Staff does not consider the denial of this application a relative gain to public safety, and the property has been undeveloped. There have been other proposals, namely a proposal in 2004 and 2005 for which the plans were approved but never constructed for that development. It does conform with, I'm sorry, for conformance with the requested change to the comprehensive plan. The comp plan does indicate that the property, according to the future land use map, would be developed as currently zoned, and the rezoning request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan for the future land use. However, the goal for increased number and variation in housing is a goal of the comprehensive plan, including home ownership alternatives to the standard large lot residential subdivision, which is supported by a development for medium-density residential housing. Cluster residential development is a strategy to accomplish this goal. We do recommend approval of this case with stipulations 1 through 18. However, there is a memo on the dais that has amended or changed that stipulation in stipulation 14.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a comment about that. The memo provided by staff she's referring to, I think that was a stip that was offered to the applicant, and it was not accepted, so we would suggest we go with the original stips in the packet and not in the memo.
Okay. So disregard the addition?
Yeah, disregard the memo. We're kind of working through some things today at the 11th hour before we came in here, and so, yeah, we would prefer that it be presented with the stipulation as is presented in your packet, and I know the applicant intends to have a conversation with this board about that stipulation in particular when they get up here to make their presentation. We are not disregarding the Public Works revised memo, though only the planning staff revised memo. You should have two revised memos on your plate.
So take the revised, excuse me, memo from Ms. Neuer. We're not doing that, but keeping the revised memo from Mr. Scoville?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry for any confusion.
I'm sorry, were you done, Ms. Neuer?
I'm done. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Block?
Carrie, I think you mentioned that the street that kind of deadends to the east is for future development. How does that tie into the case we just saw with Regent's Park?
So it does directly tie in if that development does occur on the agriculturally-zoned land, but until that is developed, it would deadend. So it does align, in other words.
But I guess I'm, I've actually got the Regent's Park plan opened up, and it just doesn't look like it lines up to me. Do you have a version of this that can show us that or show me that?
Uh, you know, let's see.
Maybe I do see it now.
Do you need me to?
Well, if you have it, maybe it would help just to make sure that I'm, know what I'm looking at.
Let me see if I can find a good copy here that would help. While he's talking about Regent's.
Like the last case, Sheet 10, maybe? I don't know. That would help.
So light, though. I can try. Here, I've got it here, too. So I can take these two up. So, okay, so if you see.
No.
Should be a first read.
Yeah, but then, so there's nothing in the middle right now. That's, okay. Thank you. And then I have another question. If a man. I don't know that there was any reference in our packet to the 135th Street Community Plan. How does this fit into that?
The 135th Street Community Plan?
Yes.
How does it fit into it?
Yes.
Pedestrian access would be one part of the 135th Street Community Plan. As far as what? Do you have anything to add? Yeah.
Commissioner Block? So when staff was reviewing this, we did take a look at the 135th Street Plan very closely to see how this development will ultimately kind of tie in to the goals and policies of the 135th Street Plan, which of course is adopted as part of our comprehensive plan. However, we also took, we reviewed what our surrounding land uses were. We had another residential developments that were approved south of 135th Street. So we have Aventino that's been approved. We have the Tuscany Reserve condos that are just on west of Chadwick have been approved, and we have multiple, we have the Row Homes as part of the Regent's Park, or Mayfair Regent's Park, which is directly east of this project. So we felt that the proposed use of the twin villas actually kind of fits nicely in with the medium-density residential right along 137th Street. That has already been approved by a governing body with surrounding housing types and with the zoning that is currently approved on land.
Thank you.
I can jump in and add on to that as well. So while this doesn't necessarily meet some of the objectives of the 135th Street street community plan, looking at precedent from and, you know, spacing, massing that has been previously approved along one hundred and thirty-fifth street on that south side of the corridor, we felt like it fit what has been previously approved as far as that, the planned uses and single family use and the massing of those other developments. So as far as, as far as precedent goes, we kind of lean toward this being in fitting with those.
Thanks. Commissioner McGurn.
If we could look at C two point O, which is this, if you wouldn't mind putting it up on the projector, if that's convenient, that would be great. Okay, so maybe, oh, it's not going to be very visible. On my piece of paper, it, the agricultural land that's been referenced that borders one hundred and thirty-fifth, right there on the right side, and in the document that we were given, there's a dotted line that looks like it illustrates the property line for what is listed as agricultural. It appears that the street that comes off of the development in question, a hundred percent is within that agricultural land that isn't being developed, if I've read correctly. It doesn't look like that street's going to be able to go anywhere until that developer sells or allows.
That's, that's correct. I mean, it will dead end until that is developed. It's for future access.
Okay, so that leaves one or two entrances and exits. Is it just the one off of one hundred and thirty-third?
Two.
Two.
There's one on one hundred and thirty.
The other one goes over to Chadwick.
Chadwick, yes.
Which is just beyond the bank.
Yes. The, the, the bank entrance is also, it connects with this entrance, too.
Okay. So bottom line is we're, if we approve this, we're approving something that only for some foreseeable period of time provides access in two spots, not three.
At two points, yes.
And that's not a problem?
Um, Brian, do you?
The, the fire department reviewed that for access and safety issues and they had no concerns with the two access points, given the relatively low number of units within the development.
I'm just thinking out loud, from a traffic standpoint, the exit off of, out of the development onto Chadwick and then turning right to go up to one hundred and thirty-fifth, I don't know how many cars could, could fit there, but five, six, something like that, and before people wouldn't be able to get out of that exit if they were turning right to go up to one hundred and thirty-fifth?
Yeah, the applicant's engineer may be able to better answer your question on the queuing that occurs there.
Okay.
But we did, we did send this to our peer reviewer, Olson Associates, and they reviewed the traffic study. And we found no, no real concerns as far as the increased traffic demand. This would actually be fairly light traffic demand compared to like a mixed use development.
Okay.
That residential in this location would create less demand on the existing road network and two access points would, would easily accommodate the number of residential buildings being proposed here.
Sixty-three families and two cars for, for each, I assume?
Right. Well, and what we do is you typically, the I T S traffic manual recommends you typically consider ten trips per home. So, you know, if you have sixty-three homes, you'd be looking at about six hundred and thirty trips per day in and out of this development. Of course, those don't all occur at once and they don't all occur in the peak hour either.
Sure. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Franzay.
I wanted to go back to the question about the adjacent ag land and the access point to it. Is, is the attempt here to just not land lock that parcel with only having direct access to one hundred and thirty-fifth?
So that's up to the person, the property owner to decide what, when and, and who they sell that property to. I know that, I think both Regent's Park and the Villas of Chadwick applicants have approached that property owner and they may be able to speak, the applicant may be able to speak more to that.
Do you know if they're granting access easements to that property owner? Or is this just theoretical that later you could have an access easement over this property?
That would be something to ask the applicant as well. At this point, we don't have any documentation of having an access easement there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is just kind of a, it's about a one acre parcel wedged in there between Regent's Park to the east and then this proposed development. So the thought is at some point that will probably change hands, either to one of these developments on either side. As a one acre parcel left over on one hundred and thirty-fifth street won't be able to develop just independently on its own. And so the thought of having this access point that aligns with the Regent's Park over to the east would be to provide for, at some point in the future, when this does change hands, and so provide for the possibility of something there. So you're exactly right, instead of land locking it and making it only accessible potentially via Regent's Park to the east, just leaving that potential open for in the future when something will likely occur with it.
Should, should we be requiring an access easement for that parcel? Because I mean, once we've approved and this gets built out, we don't really have the ability. Like if both developments just decided they don't want the parcel and they don't want to grant an access easement, then even if the road's there, we've land locked them.
What? I will let Brian take that one.
So I would recommend with the final, that we require an access easement on this development such that that parcel, when it develops, has the option to utilize these roads. However, I would note that these roads are private roads. They won't be city maintained. So that would be something the developer would have to agree to. But if he wouldn't agree to allowing an access easement across his property, there would be no point in making this connection. I think that the idea of connecting that parcel to this development provides a secondary point of egress, which would, I think, meet fire's requests. I don't know if it's required, but I think that that is preferred, you know? So I can't speak to their, their rules and regs, but it would be my recommendation that as this project moves forward, maybe with the final development plan, we stipulate, or if you'd like to tonight, you could stipulate, that this developer shall provide an access easement through their parts, through their property for the adjacent property. And then if and when that development to the east occurs, we can do the same for them.
Thank you.
And then questions for staff, Commissioner Block.
Brian, this one might be for you, too. I guess that was mentioned in the packet about the private drive, but remind me why, why, and how that would work with snow removal and repair and why, why they would want to, and maybe it's a question for the applicant, but why we would allow them to have this as a private drive versus a public?
So in, in this case, we do prefer public roads. In this case, these roads, the geometrics of the roads don't meet city standards and it's specifically related to the ninety, almost near ninety-degree bends at the two corners. And given the site constraints and creating as much separation from one hundred and thirty-fifth street as possible, staff felt that it was reasonable that these be, and the developer would rather not have these as private, but he's willing to, given the site constraints is, is my understanding. And they're certainly welcome to speak on that as well. So this was discussed, I, I talked with our director of public works, David Lay, about this, and we kind of went back and forth with engineers on can we make this meet standards? And it was a real struggle and we felt that it was best to allow this or work with the applicant moving this forward based on private streets.
So they have to maintain them and?
They would have to maintain them if you're, answer your question, original question. They would maintain their streets, the pavement condition, clearing of snow. And it would be kind of like the internal road network of other similar twin villas. The most recent example I can think of would be the Waterford villas right there, south of one hundred and thirty-seventh, that we recently saw that case come through, West Amish and South one hundred and thirty. That's also a private street serving villas.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? I had one question in regards to the deviation requested. It says that the applicant's requesting a reduced side yard between buildings from thirty feet to twenty feet. The applicant has provided significant green space, excuse me, approximately fifty-one percent within development. Just looking at the overall map, it looks like a very, very tight fit. And I'm trying to figure out where's the fifty-one percent coming from?
Um, I think if you turn to, there's an open space sheet on here that shows the plan. Let me find that sheet for you.
It's sheet C two point two.
So the green space we're considering is the retention basin?
Uh, there's the detention basin and then everything in between that is the open space. Impervious. I'm sorry, pervious.
But the retention basin, it's just open, it, it's going to be gated or, or like, no one, you can't use it. You can't go in there, right?
Right, it would just be open space.
Okay, but will, will there be a fence around it or is this completely open?
Um, that's a good question for the applicant. I don't know that we've come to that decision on this preliminary plan yet.
Okay, so all the green space is basically all the common use space and, and?
Yes, and then there's some space up near one hundred and thirty-fifth street that's open as well. A side yard, basically, abutting one hundred and thirty-fifth.
Okay, and then there's that little common space in the?
Yes, correct.
The southeast corner there as well. Okay.
There is no requirement that that would be fenced and it is typical that we would count any retention or detention area in a site as open space in the calculations.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Block.
Just to clarify, Julie, did, did you say it, it is required that it's fenced or not?
Not.
Not fenced? He had a number. I just to clarify, I didn't understand what you said or hear what you said. You said it, it's required that it is fenced or?
No, it is not required to be fenced.
Okay, thank you.
And Brian just specified that it is a extended wet detention, so it will have water in it. So be kind of a, you know, what, a water feature like there are, you know, on other sites that we have.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, with that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Henry Clover, Clover Architects, K L O V E R, eighty-eight thirteen Penrose Lane, Suite four hundred, Lenexa, Kansas, six six two one nine. I got through that, I can remember that part. We are here tonight to request, obviously, staff did an excellent presentation. There's a lot of information, so I will not try and double up on that information. We're seeking rezoning of the commercial and office space, which, as you understand right now, the left half of the site plan is the commercial and office and the right half is the agricultural. The first question is, why are we here and requesting RP three? It doesn't make logical sense. The site had been, as they said, was originally approved in two thousand and one, so it's been, or twenty, two thousand and four, I believe, it's been over twenty years on the market. The only thing that's been built is the bank on the corner. It is a difficult site. It's long and narrow, has limited visibility and limited access. It's not from any of the major streets. And so it needs to be something else. And we do believe there's a market for this type of product, particularly in Leewood. You get people that want to get out of their homes and they want to stay in the same environment. They want to be able to go to the same church, the same school. And so we do believe there's a market. From a logical standpoint, it wants to be something other than commercial, as noted. We've also discussed with some of the residents around it, I mean, it's originally master planned for MXD. They did not want it to be MXD. They did not want it to be that high density. Staff went through and presented it, the overall acreage is, is eighteen point three The whole goal, too, is to create an environment similar to Aventino that's already approved. We are surrounded by, as they already noted, by RP three already. So in terms of a use, it makes a lot of sense. Don't want to reiterate a lot of the things the staff already said, you've seen the site plan. There is a little pocket park on the bottom. We worked with staff to pull the buildings further away from one hundred and thirty-fifth street and create some buffers. As I noted, there's sixty-two, but the whole goal is to create a lot of flexibility, that have, you know, one and a half story, potential walkouts, you know, three to four bedrooms, two and a half to three and a half baths. So the whole goal is flexibility. It will be a maintenance provided community as well. And the square footages are anticipated to be between eighteen hundred and, and three thousand square feet. Don't need to go into a lot of the details, the staff went through it. There's obviously, they said fifty-some percent, but we thought there was sixty-two percent open space, that's the way we calculated it. But it's still way in excess of, of the ordinance. Images for what it may look like, but you might also notice that we show a lot of materials. We're trying to create a lot of flexibility and character for everybody and have them almost custom designed. We do think there's a need for this area. You can see the materials, we're creating quite a palette and obviously they'll be nice buildings. The question, you had a couple of questions I wanted to answer. One had to do with the connection. We are also the architect that aligned one thirty-five, and so that cut through is lined up exactly across that property. Obviously, there's that little piece in between, but they're lined up exactly on either side. So the only way to connect that side is from either side. The owners already noted that they would be acceptable to a, a cross access easement that would be on the property because obviously they need to get access. I think there was one other question, too, that I'm trying to remember. And I can stand for questions. That's without repeating what the staff said, we think it's a valuable product that is needed in the area that. We think that there's a lot of people that will want this type of, of development and there hasn't been any objections that we've received from the community. So we would stand for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clover. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Block.
I guess I'll kind of ask the same question I asked the previous case. You know, I, I mean, they, they went from twin villas to single family because they're, don't think that there is that need there. I guess just what's your research background, you know, experience that, that you think that this will be needed and it's very close to this other development?
I, I think it's more about the product that we're trying to create. There is a, we're trying to do the, the little bit tighter floor plans, a little bit less expensive, to say. I mean, everything's pretty much expensive in this area, but the goal would be to create a, another product that would be a little bit more for the market. The buildings that are going in there right now are exceptionally expensive, the ones that we were talking about, that were on the agenda before us. And for duplexes, I don't know that the market's there for it, but we're trying to create a different product. So and Mr. Odo.
Okay, Rick Odo, Odo Development, one five two zero zero, West one hundred and fifth Terrace. Welcome back, or I should say hello again. If you see on the board that we've got in front of you, the reason why we went with RP three is when we came forward with this six months ago, and this got asked to be postponed a few times because of agenda constraints. If you notice on both sides, east and west side, it's RP three. So we were trying to match the environment of what's there. So that's why we came forward with that and we're having good, we also want to build a little bit smaller twin villas than what they're doing to the west and what I'm doing to the, to the north. And by the way, I would do want to say something. We won best twin villa in the city by the H B A, the, the Prater Homes this year that just came out last week. So I'm very proud of taking first place on that. We want to give same type of quality. We wanna give same type of quality here, but we do wanna make these a little bit smaller. I believe the ones to the west are almost four thousand feet, thirty-five hundred, four thousand. We're trying for the eighteen hundred to three thousand. So much smaller homes coming in a little bit, a few hundred thousand dollars less than the other two products. And yes, we're fine with the cross-easement with going across. And we really wanted these to be public streets, but because of the way the RP three works, it just doesn't work with the zoning. So we're kind of forced into maintaining streets, which is no problem, because it's a maintenance-provided community anyway. You can't hear?
Nope, can't understand you.
I'm sorry, we can't hear back there either.
Can't hear up here either with you.
I had a lovely speech. You want me, where should I pick back up? I'm sorry. Was I not close enough?
It's just our AV system is aging.
So I hate to repeat, but I will for, because I'm not sure what I, where I picked up. But we're trying to match, I think you heard, we're trying to match the east and west side. We just want a little bit smaller units than what we have to our north that we're building at East Village and what they're building to the east of us. And we feel there's a good market, because the other ones are all over a million. We're trying to bring these in at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a little bit smaller, but still nice. And we're gonna give them more flexibilities on these, to have more options of floor plans and more options of material, so we can go high-end, lower-end or whatever, but still the quality of Leewood. I think that's it.
Any questions for the applicant?
We do have, we do wanna talk on the stipulations and
Oh, I'm sorry, are you not done with your presentation or? I'm sorry, yeah, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the commission. My name's Curtis Holland. I'm an attorney with Pulsonelli Law Firm, for the record. My address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Leewood, Kansas City, Missouri. Forget where I am, sorry. Six-four-one-one-two. Anyway, thank you for hearing it. We do wanna bring your attention to one stipulation that's in the staff recommendation. It is stipulation number fourteen. It concerns the burying of overhead power lines. It's the standard stipulation that the city has used for these kinds of development that abut overhead power lines. And if I could, could we put the picture back up on the screen? There you go. Thank you very much. So we have roughly about four hundred and seventy-five feet lineal footage along one hundred and thirty-fifth street here. There are overhead power lines there on our side. There are overhead power lines to the west of us, across where the bank property is, as well as to the east of us, where you just heard the application, Mr. Lashbrook's project is. And it goes all the way over to Kenneth and frankly, past. So you have overhead power lines on our side of one hundred and thirty-fifth street. So we've had some discussions with staff today, myself and Patty Bennett, city attorney. And we were talking about this stipulation and have been. Frankly, Mr. Odo has been talking to Ms. Stoddard on this same issue for a couple of weeks. But just wanted to explain to you where we were with regard to the overhead power line. There's just, from a practical standpoint, it's very challenging to bury four hundred feet or so of power line in the middle of two overhead sections, as you can imagine. You have overhead power lines and per the stipulation, you're asking to basically drop the overhead power line and go underground for four hundred and seventy-five or so feet. So from a practical difficult, from a practical standpoint, it makes it very difficult to do that, to coordinate the construction with Evergy to do that, as well as make it extremely cost inefficient. We think what will happen likely is that when the overhead power lines come down, they'll all be done at the same time and not with our one little project here in the middle, if you will. So that was one consideration for some relief from the stipulation, again, stipulation fourteen. I asked staff to pass out to you the alternative language that we would have. And we understand that this is really a decision for council, so what we're asking you really is to defer this decision to the council and because we understand that that's where that decision will be finally made. But I did want you to at least have a look at it and understand what we're, where we're coming from. The other part, if, again, stipulation fourteen's in your packet, you're just reading what my alternative stipulation is. And just in a nutshell, what we're asking for is for us to participate financially in the lowering of the line, but not have it be done at this time. And we're also asking that our participation level be capped at one-third of the cost of that. And the basis for that is that the project immediately to our east, Mr. Lashbrook's project, that was the same stipulation in essence which they received. It was a reduced amount to bury them under, underground, the overhead power lines underground. It was a discussion and an agreement between the city and Mr. Lashbrook. And we feel to be fair, we should, you know, it would be, we would want the same thing. We wanna be treated just exactly the same as Mr. Lashbrook was. No better, no worse, just even across the board. That's the fair thing to do. And we understand that was the agreement with, with the city to do it that way. We've looked at Mr. Lashbrook's stipulation. That's clearly, he, you know, is only paying a portion of the cost to put his line underground. So we're just asking for that same consideration with this stipulation. And we're asked, you know, again, we know it's a city council decision. And so we would just ask that you defer that, the resolution of this stipulation to the city council for final decision. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any about them. That was the reason for the stipulation, our basis for asking for some relief from it. So with that, I'll stand for questions. If you have about this stipulation or about sort of the design or any of the other questions you had about the site plan, we can get our team back up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Block?
Mr. Holland, so one more time, where are these lines? Are they just along one hundred and thirty-fifth street or they elsewhere? I misunderstood when you were
These lines are right along one hundred and thirty-fifth street, just at the north end of our, so we're on the south side, right? So this is our north property line, and the line goes east to west, west to east.
And there's some high voltage lines in there as well, I believe. I think that we dealt with this on the last
I'm not sure if there's high voltage lines, like a transmission line. I think they're distribution lines. If they're, if they're, if they're high voltage lines, you can't bury them anyway.
So then, then, I don't know, you say this was, was what your request is basically written the same as the one to the east, the development to the east?
Yeah, we're asking to be treated the exact same way.
So who is the third? I just don't remember that from that case. Who, you would pay a third, who would pay the other two-thirds?
Well, so the way I understood, that agreement was made. Mr. Lashbrook had, was allowed to pay our third. The city would, in essence, pay the other two-thirds for that project in that case. The conversation went like, the property across the street from Lashbrook that does not have the power line on it was obviously not able, didn't share in the burying of power line on that side, which is frankly, we could spend more time on the city's policy about burying power lines and whether developers ought to be able to, or should be required to do it or not. I frankly, don't think they should in these cases. Regardless, the city picked up the other two-thirds in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can just clarify, I don't think the stip in Lashbrook said one-third. It didn't have that, had a cost number in it. And Mr. Holland's right, this is something for the council. That's why I mentioned before the staff memo. We'd ask that you disregard. This was their counter to staff's proposal. I understand Ms. Stoddard and Mr. Odo and everyone is working on that, and they will continue to. We would ask if there's a motion that you use the original stips in the packet. Thank you.
Then, just for clarification, she's correct. It didn't say one-third. The dollar amount that was in that stipulation was the equivalent of about one-third of that cost, is the way we understood it. So either way, we just wanna be treated the same, whatever that is or was. And that's all we're asking, and I think is fair. So, and we'd ask you to defer it to council, just as was recommended. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Block?
I was gonna add something real quick.
Excuse me?
Courtney Odo, Odo Development, one-five-two-zero-zero, West one hundred and fifth Terrace, Lenexa, Kansas. I do wanna clarify that those power lines are on the right-of-way along one hundred and thirty-fifth street. And then they are, we did say high voltage? High, you can still bury them, but they are high voltage.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bellser?
But not about the stipulation.
No, it's just open questions for the applicant.
Okay. Is there street parking access on this circular piece for guests?
Not, not designed to be street parking, no. They still can, but no, it's designed just like any residential neighborhood. There's no assigned street parking. Just feel free to park on the street like you would any other residential street. I mean, it's the same standard as you would any other street.
Okay, and then
What I was trying to say, there's no parallel parking established for it. It is a typical residential street.
Okay.
It is designed to city standards.
Okay, and then I have a question regarding the floor plan. I don't know what page this is. First floor plan.
A one hundred?
A one hundred, yes. So it's hard to see clearly, but the way I'm looking at this is the first floor would be the primary suite, correct?
Yes.
So when I'm looking at this first floor plan, I'm seeing a primary suite and a primary suite that's next to or backs to my next-door neighbors, where I'm sharing a wall with their primary suite. Is that correct?
I do not have the plan in front of me, but I believe you are correct. But those plans aren't really reviewed at this stage.
A one hundred, yes.
Ms. Yor, can you please put A one hundred up on the overhead? Thank you, Ms. Yor.
Sinks. Sinks in beds.
So when I'm, yes, this is what I'm looking at, on the left side.
You lower it the opposite way.
Down, there you go. Okay, so this, if I'm reading this correctly, this bold line right down the middle is the wall that separates
Yes, ma'am.
one house from the other. So in, in plan, or on, on the next page, on the next, A one oh one or A two hundred, no, it's A one oh one. So in this plan, that's not the case, where the, the primary suites are separated by an entire living room, dining room, kitchen area. And I'm just curious as to why, from a design standpoint, if you're talking about something that's gonna be close to a million dollars, why would you put the bedrooms, why would that be desirable for a homeowner to have their bedrooms wall-to-wall, to each other? Is there a way to flip that, to make that more desirable in those plans?
There are always other options, but we do put a lot of emphasis into the SDCs and the requirements of the walls in making sure it's as soundproof as possible. They're actually spaced out, there's dead space in between. But yes, at this stage of the game, this is a plan that we put out there that is still subject to change. It's not even approved until the final plan. You don't even, you don't even normally see them at this stage.
Right, well, I understand that. I'm just suggesting that maybe that's something you would want to take a look at in terms of marketability and desirability for people looking to spend a lot of money for this type of level of a home.
Understood.
Rick Odo, yeah, I agree completely with what you're saying. We are trying to look at some others. The only thing that we like about this plan where the bathrooms or bedrooms are back-to-back is it allows for a three-car garage easily. And that's the difference. Otherwise, I agree, if we're just gonna do a two-car, then we, I'd much prefer them to be split.
We flipped the plan.
We flipped the plan, so it'd be split, and we agree completely with you. We're just trying to show you some options that are available for us, just in case.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thanks.
It's good advice.
Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Fishman?
Thank you. Mr. Clover, I may have misunderstood. I think you just said that the streets were, were designed to city standard.
They are required to be designed to city standards, yes.
Are these gonna be private streets or public streets?
They are private streets, but they're still required to be designed to public standards.
Okay, I thought I heard earlier in the presentation I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought I heard earlier in the presentation that they were not designed to city standards. And, and I took it that they were not designed to city standards because they were narrower than streets that are designed to city standards.
I, I believe the testimony was, is that there are certain things that it couldn't work, such as the width and getting the radiuses and the turns. The actual street section is designed to city standards in terms of the, the requirements of the compaction, the requirements of the asphalt, the paving, the curbs, the sidewalks. That's all city standards. It's the orientation and the layout that was not quite up to be speed. But the road sections are designed to city standards.
Yeah, I'll hop in. So it's not the width of the street that isn't to city standards. It's that radius on those curves up towards the north. And then, yeah, it's just up towards the north, those two almost ninety-degree curves are not what meet, those are what do not meet city standards. But the actual width of the streets is what you would see on any regular residential street that would be in public right-of-way.
And what's important is the construction of it, so it doesn't fail.
That answers my question, thank you.
Okay.
Any other additional questions for the applicant? I had a couple, Mr. Clover. During the Interact meeting, it says that these are intended to be for sale, but will depend on market conditions. Could you, will go into that a little bit more elaborate in what the, what you plan on doing? Are these gonna be rentals or ownership, homeownership?
I have no idea why that's there. We have no intention of doing anything other than selling these. So, yes, it's for sale.
So you're intending them for sale?
No, I intend, we will sell them, yes. And if I can go back to the other question about the radius, we're contending with a radius around the bank that caused this issue on why we can't make, give them to be public streets. So we're taking some existing lemons, and we're trying to make the lemonade out of it. If I can say something, yeah. Would you agree with that, Julie? Yeah. So that's why we, otherwise, we would have pulled the street back a little bit further and had the radiuses that we can make them private, I mean, public.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
The other question referring to the Interact meeting again. Price range is estimated to start around nine hundred thousand, or price could be over a million. Is that?
I'm sorry, it would be what?
It says, the Interact means is the price range is estimated to start around nine hundred thousand and to go above a million. Is that a true statement?
Eight fifty to a million is where we're trying to see these, but probably closer to nine hundred, you know, in that range.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to have one that's a, with a kind of a walkout, not a walkout, but a finished lower basement that we can get in for, at the nine hundred or under a nine hundred. So we'll have some different plans.
I also noticed that in the development, unlike some of the other, other offers that we have, some of the other cases, that there's really no common areas in here. Besides, there's a pergola in the southeast corner. Are there any common amenities?
There is a little park. It's not diagrammed very well in the very bottom corner by the entrance off of one hundred and thirty-seventh street. There's a little common public area there.
That's the, I think, the southeast corner?
Yes.
Or the pergola, it's gonna be that, okay. And then there's no amenities, there's no pool, there's no pickleball or dog parks or anything. It's just housing.
We'll be back up to the million dollars a house. So we're trying to get, we keep having people tell us they wanna get in for under a million. And so, that's one of our complaints, we're hearing it to our neighbors and we here over at East Village. And so this allows us to be able to meet a market that we have a high demand in and keep the HOAs very reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you all very much. This case does require a public hearing, and I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on case forty-seven twenty-five? Oh, sir, please come forward. Can you, you have to come forward and to the dais, or not to the dais, to the podium. Please state your name and address. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Abram Gosman of 3105 West 119th Street. And does Mission Trail Elementary School have the teaching capacity for these new homes? And with that road that goes on to the other property, could we build a cul-de-sac there possibly?
I'm sorry, could you maybe get a little closer to the microphone and ask your question again?
Um, with the new homes, could we possibly build like a cul-de-sac on that road, onto the owner's property?
I, I, I don't have an answer for you. Did, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
Not really.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Are there any other people that would like to speak on this case?
Kenny Shaw with the Royal Investment Group, um, 1007 Southeast Willa Ridge Drive in Blue Springs, Missouri. Uh, we are developers for Oxford Palmonade, uh, further to the west. Um, just wanted to comment that we face the same issue with the power lines. So, we're on board with what, um, Mr. Odo has stated, just having the treatments be the same for everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else that would like to speak on case 4725?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block.
Saying that, I move to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Block?
Second.
Second Commissioner Belzer, all in favor of closing the public hearings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Public hearing is closed. That brings us up to discussion. And Commissioners like to discuss any comments on case 4725?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Fishman.
I have two comments, um, two questions. I don't really know how we defer on a stipulation. I think we are asked to approve, uh, or deny the application with the stipulation either proposed by staff or the stipulation suggested by the, uh, by the applicant. And if that's the case, uh, I am, I've just seen this, haven't read it completely through, I am uncomfortable with suggesting that the staff's proposal not be included, uh, as the stipulation if we vote for approval, and, uh, it can then be discussed by the city council.
If I could ask for Staff Attorney, I believe she said to keep the stipulation that is in our packets?
I know you said that, uh, but I also understand that the applicants asked us to, to consider, uh, a deferral on that, and I don't even know if that's legally possible.
And I'm not sure what that means to defer. If you want to approve it and remove that stip, but then the governing body's going to have to add something in there, and they're going to need a super majority, perhaps, if the stips are changed. So, right now, it says underground power lines must be placed underground, and the applicant will work with the city to finalize that, and that's what we're...
Yes, and I would be uncomfortable with, uh, with anything other than the staff's proposed stipulation number 14.
Yeah, I think the intent was to leave that in there, so I believe when, um, Mr. Holland said to defer, I, I don't want to speak for him, but I don't think he was intending to say to remove stipulation 14 and then ask the governing body to add something back in. Um, our intent as staff is to leave stipulation 14 as is in your packet, not in the memo that was distributed. So, leave that stipulation 14 as Marcy just read it, and that is what would go forward to governing body, should you make a recommendation, um, either way, and thus go forward to the governing body for further consideration. And then at governing body, then, um, the applicant could ask for the governing body to make a decision in terms of changing that stipulation, which the governing body can always do, um, with, like Marcy said, the super majority to override the Planning Commission's recommendation in regards to stipulations.
Thank you.
And my second observation is that, uh, it looks to me like, uh, this development has maximized the number of buildings that can be put on this amount of acreage. I know that it satisfies the density requirement, but just by looking at the appearance, I think I would be more comfortable if there were some amenity space, some green space, something other than houses and, and, uh, and driveways.
Thank you, Commissioner Fishman.
That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, sorry.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. Um, since we did have a couple of questions come from our public comment period, would we like to have the applicant maybe address those, uh, questions before, um, we continue with the meeting?
Sure.
Yes. Thank you.
Clover?
I think there were two, but I only understood the one asking about a cul-de-sac. The whole reason the road is being put there is to connect through. Um, it's not deep enough to need a cul-de-sac, it's only, it's not going anywhere. It's, um, a cul-de-sac would require quite a bit more room than would be available, but right now, it's just designed to connect across that little piece of agricultural land in between to the other side. So, I don't see any need for a cul-de-sac, and I didn't catch what the first question was, so I apologize.
Then the first question was in regards to whether or not the local schools have the capacity for added students.
Oh, okay. Um, the schools keep very much in track of the developments and, and what you're approving and the number of people that will be there. So, they, they always adjust, um, because it takes time for these things to happen. But they do, uh, very much pay attention to developments and what number of houses and permits and things like that. So, they very much do track it and make sure they keep track of, uh, the number of potential students they will have.
And my apologies to you, I should have asked you for rebuttal since there was some comments, so I apologize for that.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, uh, any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Block?
Maybe just to continue the thoughts that, uh, Commissioner Fishman had. I, I, I do agree that it is pretty tight and dense in there, uh, and I had the same thought about amenities, um, but I guess I'm trying to think of other, uh, I think Mr. Odo's comment made some sense to try to keep the HOA fees down. And I guess I, I'm, I'm struggling to remember or, uh, recall a development in Leewood, but down my way on 151st Street, there are some villas, they're not twin villas, but they're villas, and, um, there are no amenities in that neighborhood, and it's a very nice neighborhood. So, I guess, you know, I, again, that was my first thought as well, was, you know, that there are a lot of them in there, I mean, they're, they're shoehorned in this space. I just, I guess I'm, I, I don't know if the amenities, if, if you have, you know, things around it, whether it be the, the, um, project to the east or otherwise, that, you know, that they need to have their own pool and clubhouse and all that kind of stuff. So, I guess I don't know if, if I find that as a, you know, kind of a showstopper. And I do agree that this property is pretty difficult. You know, is this the best use for it? I don't know, but I mean, but I, you know, just thinking as someone that drives on 135th a lot, I don't think that this is super visible from, um, you know, when you're driving along 135th Street, that, you know, it is tucked in a little bit. I think that the elevation, maybe it falls down just a little bit, uh, away from 135th Street. You know, I, I, I asked my question about the, um, community plan because, you know, I, I wasn't necessarily a, a big supporter of Aventino. I don't know that having houses right up on, uh, 135th Street is the best, but a, as it was discussed, I mean, there is some precedent. I mean, we, we've done this before. So, I, I guess just, you know, from my perspective, it, it's probably not perfect. I mean, I, I probably would like for them to be a little bit spaced out a little further, maybe allow the radiuses. Um, you know, I think that's a product of, of putting a lot of, uh, units in, in a small space. But again, I think for this kind of narrow site, uh, this isn't horrible from my perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Any other discussion? Okay, well, uh, I would also like to comment, I saw this and I, and I mirror your Commissioner Block and Commissioner Fishman's, uh, comments, that I thought this was shoehorned in, very, very dense. But also, I, I, I do think, uh, to Mr. Odo's credit, that there probably is a market for this, and I think we'll find out shortly if there is going to be a market for it. Most of the projects we see have dog parks and pickleball courts and all these amenities with it, but I know there is going to be a market out there for people that just want a home, uh, they want to stay in Leewood, uh, and they don't want a dog park. They don't want a pool, they just want a house. It's convenient to a lot of things off 135th Street, um, and so I think this will serve a purpose if there's a market for it, and I'll be interested to see how this plays out, uh, in the future, so. Any additional comments? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block?
I move for approval of, uh, case 4725 Chadwick Place Villas of Chadwick. With the, uh, stipulations, uh, one through 18 as, uh, listed in the packet.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Commissioner Franze?
Could we add to that the stipulation of granting an access easement to the agricultural parcel that we discussed before?
Yes, I'd amend my motion to include that. Thank you. To include that as stipulation number 19?
However it staff sees appropriate.
Okay with staff?
Typically, the last stip has the number of stip, so I would probably say we slip it in as 18 and make 18, 19.
So, with 19 stipulations amended.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Franze. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Carburg?
Uh, I'm in an odd situation. I looked over the material, and I came into the meeting thinking, this is a slam dunk, and the presentation dissuaded me of that. We had six different people come in and counter each other and correct each other, even when there are things that we had written down and were referring to that don't give me a lot of confidence. So, I'm, I'm just not there. Some negotiating stipulations in the meeting seems to have been something that should have been done during staff time rather than trying to hurry it through. And, uh, to Commissioner's Block point, I think having something not horrible isn't the job of the Planning Commission. So, that's where I don't have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Carburg. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Motion's been, um, made and seconded, all in favor of approving case 4725. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote, just to be sure. Commissioner Nademan?
Nay.
Commissioner Franze?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, go back, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nademan, was that an a or a nay?
A nay.
A?
Nay, with an N, nay.
Okay, continuing, uh, Commissioner McGurran?
Aye.
Commissioner Belzer?
Nay.
Commissioner Block?
Aye.
Commissioner Carburg?
Nay.
Commissioner Fishman?
Nay.
And myself is aye. So, that's one, two, three, four, yes, two, no, uh, three, no. Uh, this case is approved and sent to the governing body.
No. Mr. Chair got four to four.
I'm sorry, thank you. I have trouble counting. Let me rephrase that. There are four nays and three ayes, so the motion fails.
Three ayes?
Mr. Chair?
The vote is four to four.
Four to four split. I got four ayes, four nays.
Okay, well, I forgot to count myself. That happens, I've heard that before. All right, so, uh, because it is a tie, the commission, the, uh, motion is not adopted, correct?
Correct, so I believe, Mark, you would need a new motion.
Yes, let me look at the statute if we're going to end at four to four, so give me one second.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Somebody wants to make a motion. If a motion to approve is going to be four to four as well, let me look and see what the statute says in the event of a tie.
Okay. Would it be best for us to take a short recess? Surely, would it be best for us to take a short recess while we're... Okay. Let's take a short recess, we will reconvene in, um, approximately five minutes. Okay. We will reconvene in approximately five minutes. Okay, we're going to reconvene, Planning Commission regular meeting right now. I'll recognize our staff attorney Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The answer to your quandary is in the LDO. It's section 16-5-2.1. It says if the Planning Commission fails to make a recommendation on a properly completed and submitted application, the commission shall be deemed to have made a recommendation of disapproval. Now, there was only one motion to approve that ended in a tie. I don't know if the commission wants to try a motion to deny or assume it would end in the same manner, but regardless, I understand the applicant has a request.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I think what we'd like to do tonight, given kind of where the discussion has landed and concerns that have been made, expressed, if we could maybe take a, maybe a timeout and work on our plan a little bit, maybe consider your comments and come back next month and have this case reheard. That's what we'd like to ask.
Ms. Knight, since we already put through a motion and had a vote, where does that put us?
I mean, the, the motion didn't pass, so I think you're free to accept a request for a continuance by the applicant.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
No, it's a request by the applicant to move it to another meeting, so I think if you can, you can agree to that, or under the LDO, like I said, it would move on as a recommendation of disfavor, but I think if the applicant wants a chance to rework the plan, I think a continuance is a reasonable request.
Okay. And then there's no need for us to vote on that, since the applicant is asking for the continuance?
Right, it's at the applicant's request.
Okay, just want to make that clear. Is there any comments in regards to the denial to give the feedback back to the applicant to work on anything?
Mr. Chairman, so it seems like?
Commissioner Carburg.
So the, this was a rejection of the proposal, correct? The way it reads?
The motion was to approve, and the vote was four to four. So the motion did not pass, so we're back to square one. It's not an automatic denial, you would then need a motion to deny, and there has not yet been a motion. So the motion to approve ended in a push, and we're back to the beginning, where you can make another motion, or you can entertain the applicant's request to continue.
Yes, Commissioner Fishman.
I would like to make a motion for denial of case number 87-72-25.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Carburg. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. With that, we'll do a roll call vote on Commissioner Fishman's request for denial. Voting yes or aye on this will put forth a recommendation of denial to the governing body. Commissioner Fishman?
Aye.
Commissioner Carburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Block?
Nay.
Commissioner Belzer?
Nay.
Commissioner McGurn?
Nay.
Commissioner Franze?
Nay.
Commissioner Nademan?
Nay.
All right. The nays I have five, the ayes two, so the motion is denied. Commissioner McGurn?
Oh, thank you. It seems to me it's more than fair to provide the applicant with the time requested and for them to get an opportunity to go back through their plan and assess what they'd like to change. I think there were a variety of things that a variety of people spoke about that could be enhanced, could be improved, could be helpful, you know, including the cross-access, the, the green space maybe being not just backyards and front yards and a small little portion at the bottom and the top. You know, a variety of different things and, and, you know, with a variety of enhancements or potentially fewer units, any of that could move in a, in a direction that was more positive, I think. So I, I would, not that we have to vote on it, but I would certainly be in favor of the additional time requested.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurn. With that, unless there are any other motions, I think we can entertain the applicant's request for continuance.
I'm sorry, there was, I'm a little confused. There was a motion to deny, and I didn't catch the vote, gays and nays are, it was five to seven?
It was.
I'm sorry, five to two?
The motion to deny was not approved by a vote of two to five. I'm, I'm.
The motion to deny failed.
Would it be helpful to have a motion to continue to the October 28th?
No, I just, the motion to deny, I think you said the motion is denied. So the motion to deny failed.
Correct.
Okay. And now you want to request or move to continue. You could vote on that if you want, or the applicant requested it.
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, no, thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. With that, we'll entertain the applicant's request for continuance. It will be continued to our September regular, regular meeting. And that will bring us up to the next case.
It can be the October regular meeting.
October regular meeting.
Yeah.
I say September.
Yes.
But we, we don't have to state a specific meeting date when they're asking for a continuance. You're just granting a continuance, and then staff will work with the applicant to get some revisions back to a future regular meeting date.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us up to case 7225, Mission West Mixed Request for Approval of a Rezoning from SDO Planned Office District to MXD4 Mixed Use District, four-story maximum, preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat located north of 135th Street and west of Mission Road. Ms. Ewing, I believe this is yours?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Cameron Ewing, Planner One. Before I get into my presentation, just a couple of housekeeping items. On the cover page of your staff report, the FAR is listed incorrectly. That should actually be a 55% residential FAR bonus instead of the 50 that is listed. Caught it everywhere else, just missed that one, so cleaning that up. You also do have a attachment placed on the dais. This is the interact letter and sign-in sheet for this project. It did make it into the online agenda, did not make it into your printed copy, so have that as well. And then last but not least, on page seven, under parking, it does say 865 parking spaces that should actually be 856, so just switch those numbers around and we're good. But with that, I will start my presentation. This is case 72-25, Mission West MXD, request for approval of a rezoning from SDO, our planned office district to MXD4, which is the mixed, excuse me, mixed-use district with a four-story maximum per height, preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat. This is located north of 135th Street and west of Mission Road. The project is proposing a total of approximately 471,000 square feet of total development on 22.6 acres for an FAR of 0.25 with that 55% residential discount. There are also 326 residential units, and that would result in a residential density of 14.4 dwelling units per acre. The proposed development would consist of 10 total buildings. There would be about two mixed, two, excuse me, two residential mixed-use buildings, a commercial mixed-use building that includes office and retail, a standalone office building, five retail buildings, and four of those are proposed to include a drive-through as part of the establishment, and then a residential clubhouse for the residents as well. The height limit in the MXD4 zoning district is limited to 60 stories, oh, excuse me, it's a late night. Woo, I'll start that. The height limit in the MXD4 zoning district is limited to 60 feet and four stories, so whichever is less in that case. The tallest buildings that are proposed within this development are the two residential mixed-use buildings located to the north. Those are proposed to be 56 feet in height approximately. The applicant is requesting a FAR discount, residential discount of 55%, as well as an FAR deviation for underground parking structures. Per the Leewood Development Ordinance, projects may receive up to 15% increase in the applicable maximum FAR based on a one-to-one ratio. For parking, the applicant is requesting to deviate from the residential parking requirement of two parking spaces per residential unit with one to be totally enclosed. They are proposing a ratio of 1.5 parking spaces per residential unit and still meeting that one enclosed, one totally enclosed. The overall development would have a total of 856 parking stalls and a cross-access parking agreement in place as well. Fontana Street would be constructed with this development. That would be a public street that is owned and maintained by the city of Leewood. The proposed streets that are interior to the development would be privately owned and maintained. Final elevations, landscape plans, lighting plans, and design guidelines for the overall development are not reviewed at this time and will be reviewed at the time of final development plan. For impact fees, the applicant would be responsible for a 135th Street corridor impact fee, park impact fee, and public art impact fee. However, the fee amounts are to be determined at the time of final development plan as There's a little sidelane. This slide just is kind of color-coded to give you an idea of where all of those heights are proposed throughout the development. You can see the ones in orange are proposed as 56 feet in height, the purple is about 40 feet, and the green is 28 feet, so those are mixed throughout the development. The applicant held their interact meeting on August 11th, 2025. The attendance and summary of their interact meeting has been included in this packet or on your dais. Since this application is requesting approval of a rezoning and preliminary development plan, staff has reviewed the application with respect to the golden factors. All criteria have been evaluated and the analysis has been included in your staff report. This graphic is just kind of your ins and outs of the development, so you can see where you'll have full access, ride-in, ride-out, or just three-quarter access as well. Regarding golden criteria number seven, the recommendation of professional staff, professional staff is recommending denial of this application. While the proposed rezoning to MXD4 is consistent with the city of Leewood's comprehensive plan map, which is also referred to as the future land use map, and the 135th Street community plan identifies this site as a prime location for a mixed-use development, staff believes that there are key elements missing throughout the plan. Here's a rendering. Within chapter four of the comprehensive plan, there are goals and objectives for mixed-use development, and that also includes directives to implement those goals and objectives as well. Staff believes that the following directives were not determined to have been met by this proposal as submitted. Goal one, objective one A, encourage buildings to be clustered and oriented towards each other, which allows for easy access from one building to another. Goal one, objective one D, integrate neighborhood-scaled private parks within the overall pedestrian networks, as well as goal three, objective two, develop human-scale village or main-street style mixed use. So with that, staff does recommend denial of this application. Should the Planning Commission determine to recommend approval of this application, staff would recommend that the 30 stipulations that are listed in the report be attached as part of that approval. And I will pass it over to Julie, actually.
Yeah, if you could forward to next slide after that, next one. So before you begin your discussion, I just wanted to give a little bit of context for this area of 135th Street. So what you've got before you, the, the map has turned to the side, so on the left is Mission West as proposed. That would be to the north of 135th Street, and then just to the right of it is the approved Oxford Promenade, which is just on the south side of 135th Street across from this. And so that was approved unanimously, recommended for unanimous approval by the Planning Commission, and then approved unanimously by the governing body back in 2023. Just wanted to give a little bit of context, like I said, as these are pretty similar layouts, pretty similar developments, and so as Cameron touched on in her presentation, the elements that we pulled out of the comprehensive plan and 135th Street plan that we felt were not met with this, which was the basis for our recommendation of denial, are very similar to what is present in the approved Oxford Promenade, so just kind of wanted to bring this back before you, that something really similar has been approved.
right in, right out, or just three-quarter access as well. Regarding golden criteria number seven, the recommendation of professional staff, professional staff is recommending denial of this application. While the proposed rezoning to MXD four is consistent with the city of Leewood's comprehensive plan map, which is also referred to as the future land use map, and the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan identifies this site as a prime location for a mixed-use development, staff believes that there are key elements missing throughout the plan. Here's a rendering. Within chapter four of the comprehensive plan, there are goals and objectives for mixed-use development, and that also includes directives to implement those goals and objectives as well. Staff believes that the following directives were not determined to have been met by this proposal as submitted. Goal one, objective one A, encourage buildings to be clustered and oriented towards each other, which allows for easy access from one building to another. Goal one, objective one D, integrate neighborhood scaled private parks within the overall pedestrian networks as well as goal three, objective two, develop human scale, village, or main street style mixed use. So with that, staff does recommend denial of this application. Should the planning commission determine to recommend approval of this application, staff would recommend that the thirty stipulations that are listed in the report be attached as part of that approval. And I will pass it over to Julie, actually.
Yeah, if you could forward to next slide after that, next one. Okay. So before you begin your discussion, I just wanted to give a little bit of context for this area of one hundred and thirty-fifth street. So what you've got before you, the, the map has turned to the side. So on the left is Mission West as proposed. That would be to the north of one hundred and thirty-fifth street. And then just to the right of it is the approved Oxford Promenade, which is just on the south side of one hundred and thirty-fifth street across from this. And so that was approved unanimously, recommended for unanimous, unanimous approval by the planning commission and then approved unanimously by the governing body back in two thousand and twenty-three. Just wanted to give a little bit of context. Like I said, as these are pretty similar layouts, pretty similar developments. And so as Cameron touched on in her presentation, the elements that we pulled out of the comprehensive plan and one hundred and thirty-fifth street plan that we felt were not met with this, which was the basis for our recommendation of denial, are very similar to what is present in the approved Oxford Promenade. So just kind of wanted to bring this back before you that something really similar has been approved, that has some similar elements present and similar elements that are missing. So just to kind of go over it a little bit, both of these developments, as you can see, do feature commercial uses that are oriented out along one hundred and thirty-fifth street with those commercial retail uses there along that main corridor. Both do contain four-story multifamily residential that's oriented towards the back of the respective development, either along one hundred and thirty-fifth or one hundred and thirty-third with this proposed development or one hundred and thirty-seventh with the Oxford Promenade. Both do feature that east-west circulation spine through the development. As Cameron mentioned, that was one of staff's major sticking points on this, that east-west spine didn't quite meet those street types that are identified in the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community corridor plan. Really similar layout to what was present in Oxford Promenade. And then both also have that north-south entry point off of one hundred and thirty-fifth street. And if you could go to the next slide. And so I just did a, a quick comparison of the two, just to kind of show the similarities of the developments. Both are similar in total site area. Both are similar in total number of buildings. Mission, Mission West as proposed tonight has a little bit higher residential units. Little bit of a, a decent difference there in the retail square footage and the office square footage. However, they both do meet the required ratios for mixed use. They are very similar in the overall density in terms of dwelling units per acre. Both pretty similar in what the proposed FAR was before deviations. Both were, this is proposed at four point, or point four-eight before those deviations. Oxford Promenade was point five-eight before deviations. Both got down to point two-five with the requested deviations. Then just listed out the deviations that were requested with both of these. Mission West is only requesting the deviation for the proposed structured parking, which is one of the allowed deviations. Oxford Promenade requested several more of the, the allowed deviations to bring down their FAR. They both do include structured parking. The structured parking that's proposed with Mission West tonight is all below ground. It's all present below those multifamily buildings up along one hundred and thirty-third street. With Oxford Promenade, the structured parking that they provided, it was a two-story parking structure, kind of situated in the middle of the apartment buildings. I think they also had a level below ground, but most of it was above ground in a, in a parking structure. And then both pretty similar in open space, although Mission West as proposed does have slightly higher open space. So again, just wanted to give you a little bit of context in terms of what has been previously approved out here just directly south of this, just to kind of have in your minds and consider as you are discussing this project and before we get to the applicant in, in making their presentation.
Any additional? Is there, is that it?
I can answer questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Monsieur Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now it's on? Thank you. I'm looking at retail D, and it appears that the queuing for the coffee shop drive-through goes right through the middle of the building, if I'm looking at that correctly. And if that is the case, is there any reason why that should not be counted as two buildings, two separate buildings rather than one building?
I'll jump in. So this is a, almost an identical setup to what was approved at Village or at East Village previously. So it is one building. The two portions of that building are connected. They're, they're fully integrated. And so the design of that drive-through is meant to come through the building to visually camouflage some of that from one hundred and thirty-fifth and then from the parking area. And so again, this is almost identical to one of the buildings that was approved with East Village out along State Line for a drive-through for a, a coffee shop.
All right, Julie, a follow-up question. Is the use proposed, I know there really aren't uses proposed, but would it be contemplated that the use in the west portion of retail D also be a coffee shop, the very same coffee shop that is served by the drive-through on the east side?
I don't believe that's the intent, but I would let the applicant expand on that a little bit in terms of what they envisioned for those specific pad sites.
Okay. And may I, if I may, ask another question. Cameron, I, I, I know that the staff has recommended denial. Can you expand a little bit for my benefit or the benefit of the, of the planning commission?
Yeah.
Your reasons for that recommendation?
Yeah. As stated before, the future land use map or the comprehensive plan map does identify this site as a mixed-use development, specifically MXD four. So it's, I, it's been identified as an ideal location. The one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan reflects that as well, that this has been identified as a prime location with the nearness to the local streets, that it would work here. However, after diving into the plan and really going through the goals and objectives, directives within the mixed-use category within the comp plan, as well as going through the street types within the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan, staff just believed that there were elements missing, kind of like the integrated green space throughout the site. We do believe that it does seem a little unintentional, or unintentional, the locations that they have been placed. The other thing that we have pointed out as well is goal one, objective one A directly says to encourage buildings to be clustered and oriented towards each other, allowing easy access from one building to another. It is in staff's opinion that the north side of the development, in comparison to the south side of the development, feels very disconnected and that could potentially pose an issue for pedestrian traffic and not meeting the full extent of the adopted policies and guidelines that we have.
Thank you. Would it be a fair statement to say that the staff felt that this project was essentially two different projects that are not integrated?
I'm not sure if that would be quite an accurate representation. Like Cameron said, I think it was staff's feeling that we felt like they could be better integrated. You know, it certainly is stated that, you know, the, the commercial, we do want that focused out towards one hundred and thirty-fifth street. And then we do want the residential focused more towards those secondary streets away from one hundred and thirty-fifth. We felt like there could have been a little better connectivity throughout the site between those elements. Like Cameron mentioned, there were just, there were several goals and objectives within the comprehensive plan and the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan that we didn't feel like were quite met with this. And so when we're reviewing these plans, we're trying to balance, you know, our analysis off of the, the actual requirements in the LDO that any developer has to meet, which those are met with this. And we have to balance that with then the goals and objectives that are in the comprehensive plan and our, our other adopted plans. And so our analysis and our recommendation for denial was based on those goals and objectives that we felt like maybe could have been met a little bit better. We felt like there could have been some things that we would have liked to see in addition to what was there, but it was not based off of any requirements that were not met as part of the LDO. So it's always a balancing act. It's, it gets a little bit tricky when we have projects that, you know, kind of, that they meet those requirements in the LDO but don't quite meet the goals and objectives of the other plans that we're taking a look at. So that's where we landed with it. And that's, you know, to why I wanted to give you that context of Oxford Promenade that had been previously approved by this body and the governing body with some really similar elements as in here. So just to kind of put that in your basket as you're considering sort of what the precedent is for this area.
Thank you, Julie. One final question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I count seven or eight pad sites and these, these freestanding sites along one hundred and thirty-fifth street, I, I'm calling a pad site for lack of a better term. Is there anything in the LDO that limits or restricts the number of pad sites within a given area?
No, there is nothing specific within the Leewood Development Ordinance that would.
This is purely a, a plan approval sort of a question?
Correct. It would, it would be part of your consideration for a plan that's coming forward on, you know, as you're looking at with layout. But no, we don't have anything that specifically restricts the number of pad sites. We have other bulk factors, like we have setbacks and we have amount of green space versus parking lot space up against a street. We have standards like that, but it doesn't specifically state any specific number of sites along a, a major right-of-way.
Thank you, Michelle.
And one other part of what, what kind of factor in here, one of the bulk standards that Michelle was mentioning would be what most of us refer to as that sixty-forty rule, right, where along any frontage, sixty percent has to be occupied by landscaping or plazas or buildings. And the, the other forty percent can be pavement or driveways or parking. So you could have one long continuous building to meet that requirement, or you could have it broken up into multiple buildings, but they would still need to meet that sixty-forty requirement, which this does.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm finished. Thank you.
Commissioner McGurn? I'd like to ask a question about parking to the staff.
Sorry. I'd like to ask a question about parking to Cameron. I was pleased to see and read that there were, I think it was three hundred and twenty-six parking spaces underground, but at the same time, I was kind of shocked at how much parking is surface parking. And I'm just kind of curious, are the, is the parking that is necessary for the occupants of the multifamily buildings, is that all underground? Does the parking provided underground satisfy the need of the, those two buildings?
Yeah, so let me actually pull my staff report up. So they actually exceed the enclosed parking requirement in the structure, the underground structured parking. They have, I believe, four extra parking spaces for that specifically. And then the surface parking that is internal to those mixed-use residential buildings are also intended to supplement whatever else is needed for parking.
Like guest?
Residential, yes.
Okay. That, that answer helps me with my question later. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Franzey?
I had a few questions for staff. What, did any of the goals or objectives in the comp plan or the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan change between the approval of Oxford Promenade and now? Or is it the exact same?
The goals and objectives have not changed.
And did staff recommend approval or denial for Oxford Promenade, if you remember?
So none of our current staff was here during that time, but in looking back at that staff report, I do believe that staff recommended approval of that one.
Okay. One other question, the requested deviations, there's the one for the parking structures and it indicates staff is supportive of this deviation request in the report. And then deviation to residential parking requirement does not state that. Should we take that to mean staff is not supportive of that requested deviation, or is that just not included?
No. So specifically for that deviation and the traffic impact analysis, that is reviewed by Public Works. And it has been deemed acceptable as is, so that's why the other deviation only has that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the questions for staff. One, one question regards to the, the traffic flow. Obviously, this is right next to Mission Trail Elementary School. And it looks like you have two exits going right onto one hundred and thirty-third street. What consideration is there given to increase traffic flow? How much, how is that going to impact the school?
So I'll let Mr. Scoville answer this question.
Brian Scoville, City Engineer. So we received a traffic study and sent that also off to our consultant for peer review. And one of the concerns was the queuing that occurs along one hundred and thirty-third street as cars, thank you, as cars queue to get into the school property. And so that was why their eastern entrance is right in, right out only. There's no left turns allowed at that entrance. So that was a consideration given the school entrance and the queuing that occurs through that area. We didn't want cars westbound on one hundred and thirty-third waiting to turn south into this development at that entrance, blocking access for people getting into the school. And then, of course, the school's traffic comes in, in certain periods of, of the day that are generally outside of the peak hours for most developments, but it's still in a neighbor and an adjacent and has been considered in the review of the traffic impacts.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? With that, I'll invite the applicant to come forward.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Patrick Reuter with Clover Architects, address eight-eight-one-three, Penrose Lane, Lenexa, Kansas, six-six-two-one-nine, sorry, that's suite four hundred. So we're here for you tonight. There's quick introductions on our development side. I also have Henry Clover with our office with us tonight on behalf of Rick and Courtney Odo, Kurt Holland with Polsonelli, Jake Haddock with Schlegel Engineers, and then Chris, our traffic engineer, I believe is online as well. So we're very excited to be here tonight to show you guys what we think is an extremely amazing mixed-use project for the city of Leewood. And staff has done a great job touching on this and they've been wonderful to work with throughout this entire process. And while though we politely disagree with the recommendation of denial, they've been instrumental in helping create this plan that you see before you here today. So as we noted, that we are on the northwest corner here of one hundred and thirty-fifth in Mission, proposing to zone the site to MXD four, which matches the master plan designation of this parcel in this area, limited to a max of four stories in height. High level, our proposed program consists of retail, restaurant buildings, which are highlighted in red on this plan, office, which is highlighted in blue. And you'll notice that there's a few buildings that are kind of ringed in blue. There's one two-story building that has office above it. Excuse me. And then our residential buildings are highlighted in orange here. And we did this and kind of showing it next to Oxford Promenade so you can kind of, you know, compare and contrast relatively easily, trying to keep all the graphics easy. So this plan was derived from the adjacent unanimously approved Oxford Promenade plan. As you can see here, we are extremely similar to it. This plan is rotated, so north is to the left. So when I start talking about directions, I'll try to be not confusing. You can see here that their commercial buildings and ours are similar in the fronting of one hundred and thirty-fifth street. This goes to the sixty-forty rule that was discussed here just a little bit ago. The MXD, or sorry, the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan and LDO encourage kind of no parking lots, you know, fronting major thoroughfares. And so a lot of the developments that you see of this type end up with kind of this ring configuration, if you will, where the parking is all internal to the site and then the buildings around the periphery. So both sites have main access points off of one hundred and thirty-fifth. And then we also have access points in as the day off both Fontana and Mission. And I'll go through all the access points here later on. Our plan has two large ponds on both the east and the west side of the site, or top and bottom of the screen here, which help kind of further buffer that residential building and provide for great views and walking paths for our units. Our residential buildings do have the parking garage fully below Um, our residential buildings do have the parking garage fully below grade, uh, for those units in order to hide that parking and allow for more green space on the site. Uh, the additional green space is interspersed throughout the development with all of the plaza space to kind of break up what would otherwise be more larger cohesive parking areas. We did that intentionally so that it's not kind of a sea of asphalt or concrete within the center of the project. Jump to the rendering that I have here before you on both nav screen and on this lovely board. Uh, at this stage, we're exploring design concepts, and we'll get into all the detailed elevations at the time of final plans. But overall, the design approach is to be a mix of traditional and modern design with a warmer mix of brick and stones contrasted by more white and cream colors and stucco elements. All of this accentuated with kind of black colored storefront, black parapet caps, light fixtures and windows. And then we're bricking up the massing overall, uh, so that the ground floor restaurants that you can kind of see here on the left and right of this roundabout, uh, have a different kind of like massing from the rest of the buildings to kind of help break up and stagger those roof lines just across the project. And then those patios, uh, and those restaurants both have patios, there's two of them there, and that overlook those green spaces in our center fountain, center fountain feature. And then you can kind of see the clubhouse in the background here, and that is located in between both of those residential buildings. So we're going to go through just a few quick improvements. Again, um, Oxford Promenade is a wonderful site, which is why we're looking at mimicking it and hopefully improving upon it. Um, so again, just some of the comparisons that staff went over, we are extremely similar. Uh, we really liked their layout, but wanted more green space. And that's kind of how we ended up with several of the larger ponds, a lot of the landscape areas that are inside of the internal development, around the periphery, next to the parking, street places, the plazas for the, um, residential units, and all the different green spaces throughout that develop, throughout our development. Overall, we have about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet of open space, which is about additional like one point seven acres of green space that is in Oxford Promenade. Um, one of the bigger items that we really like as well is the parking, uh, being underground. With it being fully screened, again, it allows for more plaza spaces, and then residents aren't necessarily looking at their parking garage, which we really like, and focuses kind of looking at those plazas and those ponds. And so more of those natural retention features with fountains allow, again, just a lot more additional like walking trails, public green spaces. Um, our ponds are seventy-six thousand square feet, so it's almost two acres worth of just the ponds, um, on our development. Uh, so getting into some more of the details, again, retail and restaurant buildings highlighted in red, office in blue, we have, uh, two two-story buildings, that blue office building off to the left of the screen or the west, and then that, um, southern, southeastern building on the corner, that is, uh, one building, it's ground floor, retail and restaurant with, uh, upper level office. Uh, there was a question about some drive-through, the drive-through going through the building and what user that would be. We anticipate that any user probably be on one side of the building or the other, just because your drive-through window is going to only be picked up from one side, um, for the driver's seat. Typically, you wouldn't have a tenant that would split a building. Um, overall, the buildings are designed, um, in this kind of configuration and fashion based on marketability. Uh, we find that buildings that are closer to that kind of four to five thousand, or four to eight thousand square foot range are more marketable, easier to build. You can, you know, from a development standpoint, it's easier to kind of get your, uh, critical mass, if you will, and be able to start construction versus kind of those larger, longer buildings. And we like that the green space helps break up the buildings as well. On the residential portion, again, in orange here, you can kind of see that it's those two U-shaped buildings. We've highlighted the restaurants that are in those buildings in red. Each building has one restaurant that's about ninety-five hundred square feet. Uh, there are apartments that go over part of that restaurant, but not all of it, which we'll get to here in a little bit. It's easier seeing some renderings coming up. Um, but overall, it's three hundred and twenty-six units, split into those two four-story buildings. And, um, again, that clubhouse in the center with a pool and a bunch of other amenities for the residents specifically. Um, overall, we have fifty-eight thousand square feet of retail and restaurant space, thirty-five thousand, almost thirty-six thousand square feet of retail for office, or square feet for office, excuse me. And the mixed-use zoning designates certain minimums for the different uses that we need to comply with, and this plan meets those requirements. Um, the site, along with its two large ponds, has over fifty-three thousand square feet of plaza space, um, which is four hundred and sixty-six percent above code requirements. Pretty, pretty great number. Uh, overall, the site has ten point seven acres of green space, uh, which is about, I think, forty-five-ish percent of the site overall. Uh, so almost half the site is dedicated to that open space. To get into some of those green areas here, we kind of highlighted all the different ones that we have in red. Throughout the development, we again tried to intersperse them, so instead of one larger green area that will be far away from, you know, one building or the other, again, the two large ponds and open green space to the north, east and west of the apartments. Internal plaza spaces that are public, but right around in those apartments. The two large green areas right in front of that circle fountain feature, and a number of pocket parks and plazas along 135th Street to break that up for the commercial, uh, retail office users in close proximity. All of these spaces are open to the public. None of them are private except for that clubhouse and its courtyard, uh, for the residents. Excuse me. So I'm going to go through a few quick access points here. Um, so the entire site is cross-parked with shared parking. The residential buildings, as I noted, have both underground stalls that are private for the residents with some surface parking internal for gas, any overflow that would be needed. Um, the rest is surface parked with direct access to internally landscaped areas, and the parking lots are placed, um, near those surrounding buildings. The residential buildings also have surface parking, um, as well that could be utilized during overflow period, but based on kind of the parking ratios that we're familiar with over the past decade or so, um, the number that we're presenting is pretty accurate for a lot of the mixed-use projects we've developed for those residents. So we're very confident in the numbers that we presented here won't cause any overlap that would be detrimental to the project. So for some of those access points, uh, we have a few ride-in and ride-outs which are circled in red here on the street, so, or on the, on the map here. So one ride-in, ride-out on 135th, a ride-in, ride-out along Mission. And then one of the access on 133rd Street is ride-in, ride-out. And our two full access points are in yellow along the, uh, new, uh, public Fontana Street and then 133rd Street. And I'll say the configuration of this network of streets is very intentional. When we did, we're doing our East Village project, uh, some of you were here and remember that one. There's a lot of discussion about offsetting a lot of those connection points. Um, and so in working with staff throughout this portion of the project, originally, we did have kind of one road up through that, but we felt that by providing two is again similar to Oxford Promenade and actually helps kind of break up that overall traffic flow. Um, but we did also want to make sure we had an appropriate amount of access. So that's why we did line up with the one across the street on the west, because it would allow for another, uh, full access point without ruining any like stacking or requirements that would be for that public road. Um, overall, in the traffic report, and I'll summarize it because it's extremely long, but I think we only have about ten to fifteen percent of our projected traffic to go to 133rd. So again, most of this is going to the south to 135th, either using that access point directly or Fontana or Mission. And traffic levels remain at acceptable levels of service with this proposed development, and that is in conjunction with all the other proposed development that's been approved to date as well along the corridor. Uh, again, yeah, elevations are preliminary at this stage, and when we get exact users for the building, get into final development plan, we'll have a better idea of the exact building design. But these images in the design criteria give a good idea of what our goal is for the community. And then just a few more, more in-depth details here on the residential buildings. Um, each miss, each mixed-use building again contains about ninety-five hundred square foot restaurant in the space, and then a hundred and sixty-three units per each building. Um, the building design uses, again, articulated steps and roof lines with undulation to create character and interest. So it's a total of over eighteen thousand square feet of restaurant space with those three hundred and twenty-six units. The unit mix is approximately sixty-five, thirty-five, one beds to twos, um, with high-end Class A finishes. Each building, again, has an underground parking garage, a hundred and sixty-nine stalls per each side of that building, so over the one per-unit minimum requirement for the LDO. Three hundred and thirty-eight stalls total, along with a dedicated loading dock and trash compactor that are all behind garage doors, completely screened from view within these buildings. Central clubhouse will have a pool, pool courtyard, fire pits, seating areas, shaved pergolas, interior amenities, and leasing office consisting of club room, kitchen spaces, fitness rooms, cycle, yoga rooms, business center, central mail and package, game room, dog wash, and more. Again, uh, looking at the rendering here, you can again see those mixed-use kind of restaurants there on the corners and that, uh, building design there. Uh, a question that we frequently get asked is how close is this to the nearest single-family home? Uh, so we put together two different overall site sections to illustrate this. Uh, overall, in general, only one resident did attend our interact meeting and was in support of this. So we were very excited that, uh, we believe we have a great project that all the neighbors will support. And he supported it due to a lot of the buffers that we are proposing, as well as a lot of the existing buffers that exist around our site today. Um, so this first section that we'll go through is taken through, um, that office building that's existing today on the, uh, northwest corner of our site. Um, and you can kind of see here from our distances, again, we're showing Oxford Promenade, the recently approved, um, residential community as well. I think that was approved a couple of months ago here, just for context. So overall, we are six hundred and four feet away from the nearest single-family home. Oxford Promenade, again, for example, was six hundred and twenty-one, um, for the single families. With the newer development there, I think three hundred and twelve feet away, um, with no existing kind of buffer there. And the office building there, it's a one-story building, but I think it's about twenty-seven-ish feet in height, so it kind of is about a two-story volume there. Uh, so second section here, this is taken through the north side of the site, uh, to kind of show that section cut through the school. Uh, the nearest single-family home is off the page, so we didn't feel that it was probably worth adding a dimension there. Uh, but we are about five hundred feet away just from the school building itself. Again, that building, depending on where you're looking at, is anywhere from about, you know, eighteen feet to, I think, thirty-six feet, depending on the, that height. Um, so with that, um, we are good with the stipulations that are as proposed in the staff report. We, there we go. Um, again, go with the stipulations. We appreciate your all time and are open to any questions. Again, this meets all the requirements of LDO. We believe it does meet the intent of the 135th Street Community Plan. Uh, we believe that the proposed development is complementary to the overall site configuration, massing and use orientation, um, that is outlined in the 135th Street Community Plan. We believe that this community improves upon this with excess green space, ponds and amenity space above and beyond LDO requirements, and in keeping with the 135th Street Community Plan. There's a lot of discussion, I think, on, with staff over the several months that we went through this, and I want to kind of briefly touch upon just the three different items that are in the staff report here, um, as it relates to, um, some of the items that they want to see more of, I guess, in terms of their recommendation of denial. So let me get a site plan up real quick. Maybe. This'll work. Okay. Um, so one of the goals that we, that was outlined here is encouraging buildings to be more clustered and oriented towards each other, allowing easy access from one building to another. In discussions, um, we felt that this orientation as proposed, again, similar to Oxford Promenade, allows for no parking lots to be along 135th Street. Placing buildings internal to the site, whether it be just to the south of our mixed-use buildings or along our entry drives, eats up too much parking. But when you're looking at commercial buildings for retail, restaurants, those want to be anywhere from fifty-five feet deep at the absolute smallest, upward of seventy, seventy-five feet. Um, and the site is pretty tight to get that done and then maintain the green space and buffers that we're also looking for with the residential. And so if we did that, we'd have to remove buildings that are along 135th Street. And we felt that by providing instead two larger green spaces at the entry of what is an extremely exciting entry sequence with an actual landscaped boulevard with a center fountain feature, actually provides a better breakup than just a, a wall of buildings and still maintains from 135th Street the appearance of basically an overall row of buildings where you don't actually see the parking. Um, so we do believe that we actually do meet that goal and objective because of that. Integrated neighborhood scaled private parks within the overall pedestrian network. I think this slide speaks, um, to that. We met that. When you look at a lot of other developments, it's a few pocket parks scattered around the periphery. This has them everywhere throughout the site. And as you can see, we also have a ton of different sidewalks, crosswalks and connectivity that go to all of these from all over the development. Each of the ponds has trails, seating benches all around them, uh, that connects not only to the internal site configuration, but also all the public sidewalks and trail network there. And we do believe that this actually does help develop the human scale, village and main street character. That is the, the third objective listed here. With a lot of those parking pieces and adding in the landscape and the different, again, crosswalks, the fountain feature, pedestrian plazas, it really does encourage that human scale and that village-type feel and does help break up that parking. Uh, so I apologize. I know I said I was open to questions earlier, but now I am actually open to questions and appreciate your time.
Oh, never mind. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Rick Odo, Odo Development, uh, 15200 West 105th Terrace, Lenox, Kansas, uh, 66219. When I started this development to talk to the group, and I hope you can see what I have on screen here. Can they put that on screen? Want me? I told them that, hey, okay, there we go. I said, "Look, if Oxford got approved a hundred percent by Planning Commission and by City Council, let's do something similar to them, but let's improve it." Instead of having a couple of large buildings, I want to break it up into smaller buildings. And I did that for a couple of reasons. One, I don't like one large mass. I prefer smaller buildings and put more trees around it. And also from a commercial point of view, it's a little bit more viable. It's easier for me to sell four to eight thousand, ten thousand square foot buildings to just what I need as they come in versus one big one that's very hard to get financed. Uh, the second thing I said is we have to make sure we don't have, I, I know we drew it up as a through-street, but we asked staff, we worked with staff, and they all agreed we don't want that through-street from, uh, 135th to 133rd for two reasons. One, I sat through all those development meetings with East Village and nobody went through streets. And this is closer to the school where they actually do have a valid issue, and I want to make sure we have it safe. So we were all in favor of, as you saw on the plan, splitting the, if you can see this, our street then goes left and right here around it so that we defer traffic, we're forcing traffic away from the school as much as possible. It's a right-in, right-out closest to the school. Everybody and staff said they liked that, but it goes against the, uh, the corridor plan. So we have a thing of safety versus corridor plan. What do we do? We went for safety. Um, the eighty, the sixty forty rule, we put everything on the inside where buildings are inside, but then you don't have, they're not seen from the street, they're not viable. And then I can't, you have this beautiful pond, uh, fountain and green space. That's almost an acre there in the middle of the site. I believe that's a sense of place. I believe it's got a lot of walkability. We got sidewalks all over there. And it is for everybody. Same with our ponds that you can walk around. We got walking trails all the way around it. We've got a sense of place. So I heard what you asked for from my neighbor and go, "Well, I'm just going to improve on it." Whatever they've got, I want a little bit better, make it better. And so I felt like we did. Their street doesn't even go through because, whatever, it doesn't even go through, straight through, but that's not the point. I think if the same, uh, Commissioner Franzey asked the question, you know, or a similar question about across the street. I think if this current staff had applied the same standards, they would tell you, and I think if you asked Julie, she'll tell you that, had they applied the exact same standards, they would have had the exact same answers to, uh, Oxford as they do to what they denied mine for. Because the only thing that we were denied for were the 135th Street. We had the same issue before. You can't meet the LDO and the 130th Street corridor plan because they're in conflict with each other, the sixty forty. Um, there, there's a lot of other issues. But this is a viable plan that, um, we believe does meet the intent of the corridor plan. It meets all the LDO. And I know you've heard it before, the whack-a-mole situation. Commissioner Block and I, I mean, you've talked about it before, uh, I think it was, or maybe somebody else, who said, "Whenever you do one thing, you, you lose on this side. You can't get that corridor plan to work completely." So that's why we, we made sure we met all the LDOs. We're not asking for any real deviations. And once again, I believe if you applied the same standards, you would have had the same questions or, or concerns from staff to Oxford. So I go, go back to that. And I also asked for our, instead of having an above-ground garage for our parking where you have a wraparound building, I don't like those if I don't have to because the residents in those buildings don't really like wraparounds because they're looking on first floor, second floor at a parking garage versus I'm spending a lot of extra money to put it completely underground. So I'm doing a lot of extras here, going way beyond the call of... So, I'm doing a lot of extras here, going way beyond the call of duty because I want this to be even better than what's unanimously approved across the street. So, I hope you consider that and vote in favor of this project. I stand before you if you have any questions for our staff or anybody else. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant. Commissioner Franzey.
Are there going to be any incentives requested in connection with this? I know frequently around the city, when there's structured parking, there's an incentive request. Is there one here?
In this day and age, with high interest rates, high construction costs, I've never seen anything in the metro that didn't get it that got built. So, we're not asking for them at this moment, but I'm not going to lie to anybody. It's part of your thing. Even the Leo Council's talked about it. You know, there's revenues or avenues for that when it comes time to build them. So, we probably will, but I think every developer will because you'd be full not to, especially when every other metro, metropolitan city, met, every intersection in the metro gives them. Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner McGurn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the fact that you've spent that kind of money to put the parking underground, why is there so much parking in between those two U's? And I get that you need some for guests and people that aren't allowed to go underground. I completely get that, but it looks like a massive amount of parking in between.
So, I'm going to go to the right. Yeah, please. Yeah. I know the answer. All right. You got it? No? Yeah? Okay. So, if I can, I want to blow this up a little bit.
Great.
And if you notice, we've got park, we've got a lot of green space here. We've got green space on this side, so we're trying to keep the, oh, the parking is the one-point-five that we're supposed to have?
So, overall, per LDO, it's two cars per unit. That is the requirement, and we are requesting, I think, with our parking study, was, I think, a reduction to one-point-three-six, which is more of what we actually see that these projects stabilize at. So, while we have the one per unit underground, that point-three-six amount that we're over is this kind of additional surface parking. So, it's that plus the extra parking for any guests.
Approximately how many spots are surface slots between those buildings?
Ooh, that's a good question.
It would be the one-point-three-six times, one-point-three-six.
I think it's, yeah, probably about eighty, eighty to ninety-five.
Eighty spots and none of those are needed for residents, right?
Well, we do think they probably would be. So, we have, so we are requesting a reduction from two to one-point-three-six cars per unit. So, we have one car, instead of two, from the LDO. So, we're already trying to have less parking. But then, we have one per unit underground, so then there's that point-three-six number that we still need to make up for, which is why we do have that surface parking. And these U shapes are also intentional to further hide that additional parking that we still need that's not underground.
I misunderstood because I thought I asked the question earlier of whether or not all of the required parking for all of these residents was underground, and the answer was yes. But if, if, your point is it's not.
That is correct. So, there's two LDO requirements. One is the two cars per unit, and then the other requirement is one per unit enclosed. So, we do meet both of those, and I, not to speak for staff, I do believe they were talking about that portion of it, that one enclosed is that ordinance we meet.
Would it have been viable to put it all underground and then to have more amenities, you know, like some have where the entire interior section is not car-related, it's amenity-related?
So, right now, the parking is following that same building footprint of the U shapes. It doesn't extend out any further. When you start bringing your parking garages out from underneath the building, your structural costs start to go up even more than they already would.
Sure.
So, we've tried to do it. We haven't had any projects that have successfully been financed by doing that, maybe one, but it's extremely difficult. And because, again, we have that reduction in parking, we didn't feel that it was appropriate. And again, it still allows for additional green space.
And the parking that is underground is only one level?
Correct. Yeah, we're just going one level below grade there.
Okay.
We, we have also found that on the suburbial, the mixed-use type product, if you look at Promenade over at Eighty-Ninth and Metcalf, very similar, one, one-car garage underneath, the rest is surface parking. Now, at least I'd say, so, I'd be afraid to put any more parking on here for some of the reasons why I said we don't need more than the one-point-three-six, so we got it down. But we do need the point-three-six above-grade between the buildings. But I still can't stress enough that we try to show, hide it from view from neighbors, and we put big green spaces up against the buildings on both of them so that it's not such a parking garage to our, to our residents.
And there's green spaces in the parking lot. You can kind of see here as well that we do have a pathway and other additional landscaping in between even that internal parking lot.
Okay. Second question relates to, my recollection of Oxford Promenade was that that main road that went through the middle of the property, which lines up with the road that you've got coming through the middle, going north to south, was designed to be a pedestrian road, was designed to be closed at points in time where everybody could mill out in the, and have, you know, cooking hot dogs outside and having some kind of a little festival and all that kind of stuff. And I, I thought that was one of the really cool aspects of Oxford Promenade. Is, are you designing any ability for that to occur with the roads that you're designing?
Let me go to maybe the rendering real quick, actually. So, while we don't have like a full, like, road that would be able to be closed off north to south like they do, we do have kind of that larger and longer kind of east-west connection that can go across from that. At this stage, we haven't fully gone into exactly where we could or couldn't close off each roadway for, from a fire standpoint, but it is totally possible for us to look at something like that, whether it's like some of the parking areas that are just to the south of that, if that was to be closed off for larger events and then utilize those green spaces, it's entirely possible. But again, we also want to make sure that what we're providing is a little different. So, we didn't want to like fully kind of mimic everything on that site plan because they are right next to each other. And so, obviously, to be good neighbors, we don't want to fully compete with exactly like everything that's there.
Okay. So, my combination question with that is, is the traffic pattern for the residents who are going underground? It, it looks to me like it might be on the two of the building. I see the little white ramp that I assume is the, is the drive-down. Is that accurate?
No. So, the access to the garages are actually on the north side of the project, so on the left side of the screen here. So, there's one access to the garage down here. Again, we're kind of working with grades here a little bit, and the other access to the garage is actually just across from the clubhouse with how the grading is working. So, the access and those kind of like wider areas that you see here, those are additional spaces that we're providing for plazas, but then also serve a similar function to Oxford Promenade where it's for fire access. So, it's paved area that a fire truck could go down to meet hose-reach requirements, which we did work with Fire Marshal on, but it's intended to mostly be and look like a plaza there. So, the parking is not competing with a lot of the, or the entry to the parking is not competing. With the commercial, it's a little bit more hidden, but that's why you're seeing on the sides of those buildings there.
So, is it fair to say that all of the residents are going to enter and exit their building off of Hundred Thirty-Third Street?
No, and our traffic study doesn't say that.
The ramps are on that side, though, the north side you said?
The ramps are on the north side. And, well, there, one is on the north side, and then one is technically internal kind of to that U-shaped parking lot area. But again, most of that traffic is still coming, I think, probably through the roundabout, but in terms of like you're actually getting to the garages, you're not competing with that direct access there.
Okay. So, just make it incredibly clear where the cars are going to enter and off of what street to get into their parking garage underground.
Yeah. So...
Patrick, do you have a cursor that's movable on there that you can point to?
It's, it's moving on my end, but it's not appearing.
Yeah, I don't know how to start that cursor. I might help just a little bit. So, what you can see on your screen, the building on the left that, that's labeled K-two, Patrick, or Rick, correct me if I'm wrong. So, the entrance on Hundred Thirty-Third Street, just adjacent to that building, that's your right-in, right-out entrance. And that, nope, to the left, Patrick, for K-two.
Sorry. Trying to keep up with you here.
Yep. So, K-two. So, that one, the garage entrance is there on the north side, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so that's right-in, right-out onto Hundred Thirty-Third. They can enter the garage under the building there from the north. The building on the left that's labeled J-two, that's your, or sorry, sorry, the entrance on, or the Hundred Thirty-Third Street access on, on the left by K-two is full access. Sorry. So, the access to Hundred Thirty-Third Street by J-two there on the right, that's your right-in, right-out only access that's closer to the school. And that access into the parking garage for J-two is there on that internal, the west side of that building, close to the clubhouse, where his cursor is.
That's very helpful. So, so it is fair to say that all resident parking comes off of Hundred Thirty-Third Street?
It does, most of it, but we, the grade goes from south to north. So, we're kind of forced from grade point of view to put these on the south, on the north end of the site. It's the only, it's the lowest spot where you kind of have to put the parking in. That's another reason why we have a couple of entrances and the right-in, right-out only there. And the other thing is you can't come in right through the middle and go to here. So, if you're coming off Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, or you plan to go off Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street, you can go right through the middle.
Fair point.
We're trying to do that as much as possible. The other thing I want to go back to, Commissioner McGurn, is that we didn't have the walking trail. Like, once again, we don't want to copy the plan. We wanted to make things and work with it similar. But we do have areas for the food for residents to have parties back in here. That's what these courts are for. That's what this area is for. We also have for the public, these big parks, and I want to stress, that park, if I can go back to it, oops, oops, let me go back up. I believe that this park, the two, that two green spaces, that you have both sides and the fountain in the middle, is larger than their entire walkway that they have there. So, I mean, that's how big of a pedestrian-friendly, it's pretty, it's green space in the middle of your property. Otherwise, our other option is to drop a building there, and we have the internal buildings. And we worked with staff, and they said, "No, we want to keep the, the fountain there. That looks nice, and that, that park area looks better than the internal buildings to meet the Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street corridor plan." So, we're back to, what do you really want? Is that really what you intended to do, or is this really a better plan? So, we're constantly fighting that.
I understand. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Additional questions? Commissioner Block.
Mr. Chairman, I think in the interact meeting, I think the comment maybe was that it would take about eighteen months to build this out, if I read that correctly. Is that accurate? And what would be the phasing of all this?
So, I would say that the phasing is going to be market-driven, as with most things. Phase one is going to be Fontana Street and that access because that is a public roadway. The eighteen-month construction time is more for like the residential piece of the building. Those buildings do typically take about eighteen months to build, anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two months for just the residentials. Should any of the pad sites go first, then those would probably take less time, probably like five months to build. But our currently, I think we had a phasing plan in the development where we anticipated phase one to be the residential.
Say that one more time, sorry.
Phase one of the phasing plan is anticipated to be the residential component. But again, it's going to depend on, you know, if leasing and market, market rates, so...
Can I add something to that? Again, sorry.
It's a tag team.
It is a tag team. As far, as far as phase one would go, just so you know, it would include whatever we, if we get a retail going first or we get the residential, I hate to go one, two. No matter what, I think, one, by code, we have to build Fontana. Two, I have to build the, this, this kind of cross-section, east and west, and the entrance from this green space here, south. Whichever phase is first, that, those, the key elements that everybody's going to want going first, along with the ponds, because I need it for my retention and storm and all that other stuff. So, I think the important parts everyone's going to look for are going to come in with first phase, whether it's retail or the residential.
And so, you just happen to be the developer for East Village, and, and you're not fully built out there. How does this, you know, you know, you've got offices here, you've got offices there, you have pad sites there.
Yeah. I'm not fully, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I'm not fully built out. I am fully built on phase one. I'm building phase five, the retail portion and office portion along State Line, Hundred Thirty-Fifth, we're building that. And we just got a grading permit, I believe, today for phase three, which was the brownstones in Chadwick Park and the big park that I've been wanting to get going on. So, I can get that because once I get that big park going, I think the rest is just going to go like games bucks, gamebusters. Just like this here, when I get this park and street and everything built in and see the amenity package, everybody's going to want to be here as well.
So, I guess maybe, I, I don't, how do these kind of, you know, if, if you have a, a unique, it's kind of, I think, what you said with, with East Village, someone new to the area, how would they decide whether to go to East Village or to this one, or, you know, what's, what's the difference, or what's the draw for one or the other? I mean, you're trying to fill both at the same time, I guess, is what I'm still getting at, is...
Well, I think it's valid. East Village, I've got a lot, the residential part, we're going as fast as we can on. I can only do so much at a time, and we're building that out. The commercial part of it, we have about a half of the retail part on State Line under LOIs or contract or whatever, we're talking to people about stuff. I'm hoping by the time I get that built and done, and this is probably two years before I'd ever be able to break ground on it, by the time I do finals and then all the engineering work and through permitting, and that's if they don't stop for any reason at all, I'm hoping, nothing like hope, as a, as a game plan for financial security, East Village will be sold, the, the retail portion of that will be sold out by then. But we will put signs on immediately upon this, retail available.
And then I, I think just overall in this kind of portion of the city, it's, it's a lot of apartments that haven't been built yet, you know, between yours, the one-fifty or whatever, you know, the Lashbrook property, the, the one just directly to the south of this. So, I guess then what, I mean, you know, I know you've kind of taken pride in being the highest, you know, the most premier apartments in the area. I mean, what, what do you think that does to this whole, you know, if they all kind of come online on or about the same time? I don't know.
Well, it is, it's a fear of all developers. We're, we're going to have to stagger what we've got since I control so much of, I mean, I say, I hate to say control, but own the ground for, you know, three of these apartment communities we're talking about, and there's a few others. We'd have to be careful with, the banks won't let you build too many in a certain area. I won't build too many in a certain area. I'm, as I'm finishing one, I'll start another, so I'll, I'll kind of go like that. You know, one after the other is kind of what I intend on doing. But as they lease up, I'm going to get started on the next one. And these, right now, we're waiting, like everybody on the, on the apartments and residential, waiting for interest rates to drop a little bit more. They're starting to go down. Once they hit about five percent, we'll be able to make these things profitable.
So, one more on that. So, I don't think you, you have not broken ground on the apartments in East Village?
No.
Okay. And any, what's the timing on that, just roughly?
I'm sorry, what?
What's the timing on that? Is that, you said that's the interest rate, so you're not, you're not...
I'm, I'm hoping that by May, interest rates will start to go down another point and a half, and then we do plan to break ground on one there. But on that same basis, I've given them the approval to go ahead, we start doing the CD so we can get going on that part.
We are working on the plans.
Yeah.
Did you have some to add there?
Okay. So...
Additional questions?
I'm sorry, there's a huge need for the product, for the apartments, and for a reasonable amount of retail, so don't be afraid of it being too many. Just make sure they're done right, and that's what I'm trying to do, is the best there is. So, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Commissioner Belzer.
Okay. Thank you. I think one of my concerns with this in comparison to Oxford Promenade is a bit of the walkability. I'm hearing from staff that that's also part of their concern. And when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at your east-west that goes around your roundabout, and with parking coming in at both sides, it's not really a straight, there's no walkability right there because you've got cars parking, you've got cars driving, that, that connectivity is kind of missing there differently than it is in Oxford Promenade. Because you've got cars backing in and you've got cars pulling in and then you've got cars going through. Can you go back to the? I think, and part of my other concern as far as walkability goes is the four drive-throughs. That's a lot of drive-throughs in one pretty small piece of land. So, that means the connectivity between, let's say, A, building A down here, office, and you want to get, you're going to go, um, to C and then you're going to go to E and then H, whatever. Like, all of that, you're crossing, each drive-through is really two lanes of cars going through because you've got cars coming in and cars coming out. So, if you're a pedestrian walking across here, you're crossing all kinds of cars. Um, and then you have to go back up and around and then go through. I just, my concern is the number of drive-throughs. And that feels to me like that takes away from the actual walkability and the connectivity.
So, I think there's a couple, couple pieces there. Um, one, in front of the residential buildings and that, um, walkability there. Um, so part of this is also working with fire department, how much space we can have between the building and the road per fire code. Uh, so there is a limit to how far we can set those buildings back. Uh, so we actually did work with staff on that, entire east-west road. Um, originally, I think we only had parking on one side, but we wanted it to fit more of the actual main street, um, character that is outlined in the one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan. So, we were encouraged to put angled parking on both those sides. So, you also reduce the amount of conflicts on the east-west instead of just nineties. Um, and so then that with kind of the sidewalk out in front of the building is how we've kind of handling that portion of it. Um, thank you, Rick. Let me get my lovely pointer out again here. See if I can get this to work. No, it doesn't want to zoom in when I do that, but that's, okay, well. Yeah, can't do one or the other. So, that kind of exists kind of all along the south side of the building. Um, and in terms of all the pedestrian connections, I mean, there are so many different ones throughout the site and around all the buildings. So, whether or not you're going from building A to C and you want to go through the front piece of the building or if you want to go out the back and go through some of the trails and pieces there, um, there's a lot of different options there as well. Um, a lot of the drive-throughs that we have, despite, not despite, are encouraged to be hidden with how they're proposed. And then also, all the drivelanes are in very similar and known locations, so they're all very consistent. We're not hiding anything there either. And they all have, again, crosswalks and there's multiple either north-south connections across the site. Whether, you know, there's one here for the built project, there's one here, another one through the green space, more around each side of the roundabout, another pedestrian connection that way, and then one across the far east end of the site. So, we do believe that we do have a lot of different pedestrian connections throughout the internal portion of the development and then have protected them accordingly with kind of those crosswalks as well of how, and how that site lays out.
Okay, and then as far as this internal, um, parking inside of the apartments?
Yes.
Is that intended to be for, um, for apartment resi- for the residents? Or is it for anyone who wants to park in there?
Um, well, we anticipate that mostly the residents will use it, but all of the surface parking is cross-parked. So, technically, anyone can park anywhere. Um, but I kind of doubt that someone would park there and then walk all the way to like the office building. I could see that you might get some restaurant parking within our mixed-use piece that would park there. But again, because we are only, I think, needing that one point three-six cars and it is cross-parked, I, we don't anticipate any issues with that.
Okay, and just lastly, I just want to ask, um, so as you know, and we all know, staff has recommended denial of this proposal. Have you given solid consideration to the issues that staff has with this proposal to kind of, sort of like in the last one where, you know, hey, let's continue this and make these changes and look at it differently? And have you thought through what staff is saying is giving them pause to approving this and making concessions and making, um, I can't think of the word, I'm.
Yeah. Um, so, yes.
Compromises that, so that you can come to an agreement.
Y- yes, I would say that I think a couple of things here is that we've been working with staff throughout the entire process of this project. We've had several sit-down meetings throughout. I think that, um, I will say that I personally was a little bit surprised on the recommendation of denial because we talked about certain things in those meetings, such as the buildings being internal and how that would, again, like I mentioned in my presentation, how that would have impacted parking and how it would impact the overall flow of the site. And we believe would lead to a, a negative to the plan, um, instead of an actual improvement. Um, and that goes for the same of the integrated private parks. I mean, look at the amount of green space that we have here. That's all throughout the site. Um, I would, I think we have to respectfully disagree that with what that recommendation of denial is. I am extremely confident that we meet the one hundred and thirty-fifth street community plan and it's all of its intents. As always, we do want to continue to work with staff. We had been communicating with them over the last several days since the staff report came out because it did take us by surprise. Um, but we do want to bring it before you here tonight and are seeking approval. And we do believe that it does meet that community plan and it does meet all the ideal.
I'll just, um, elaborate a little bit on what Patrick said. Um, so they have been working with us, uh, really well throughout the course of, uh, getting this to you. It's been in our office for a, a few months at this point as we've worked through a lot of issues. Um, I will say from a staff perspective, a lot of the, um, issues that we identified when they first came to us have been worked out. Um, the things that we did identify in the staff report as still giving us pause, um, are things that we have talked with them about, um, are things that, um, they, as the development team, feel like are not workable for the plan for one reason or another. Um, so, you know, that's kind of where it lands in your lap. So, we've identified the issues, um, they've identified why, um, you know, those are not really workable within their plan. But I will give credit to the design team. They have, um, worked with us a lot on this. And the plan that you see before you today is, um, much different than what they initially came to us, um, to show us. Um, and they have incorporated a lot of our suggestions and our asks in terms of bringing this forward.
And I appreciate that. And one thing I would like to add is that we do look forward to continuing the plan refinement. We're in preliminary. And so, as we get into more of the details, we're going to continue working with staff. And I'm confident that through the final plan process, we can get a lot of this resolved as well.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Cricks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to call attention to the planning commission that we are approaching nine o'clock. If we want to extend the meeting another thirty minutes, you must call a vote.
Wait, we, we got.
Thank you.
Commissioner Block.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting up to thirty minutes.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Franze, on favor of extending the meeting thirty minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Uh, the meeting is extended till nine-thirty at a minimum.
Thank you.
Continue. Are you done with, uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Carver.
Quick question. You're talking about safety with the traffic. On the retention ponds, are there, uh, fences around those?
There are not proposed to be fences around that. Um, there are certain requirements that those retention ponds are designed to in terms of like the amount of slope that goes into those ponds. They can be easily exited, but there are no, no fences. We have walking trails and plazas all around them and there's landscape buffers, uh, between like where the walking trails are and the ponds. Uh, we felt that it kept, uh, keeps it more natural to not have a big fenced pond.
And I think that's laudable. I also think that with the school across the street and you never know when one escapes, if you're interested in safety, that may be something to think about.
No, I, I appreciate that. Um, hopefully, no one escapes and gets across one hundred and thirty-third and then into the pond. But I'm a hundred percent happy to work through that one as we get, uh, through final.
Okay. On one hundred and thirty-fifth street, I see the shrubbery that's out there. I have no idea. Is that big? Is that little shrubbery?
Um, so, landscape plans are still preliminary at this point, but it's going to be a combination of both kind of, you know, street trees that are required, other trees, and then also the understory shrubbery. Also, obviously, you know, we do have buildings there and tenants want to make sure their signage is seen. So, it's going to be a very intentional placement, but it's going to be a wide variety of whether it's like short grasses or taller grasses along with trees. We want to make sure it's a really nice kind of, you know, trail-like, um, portion of the development. Which is why that kind of like trail, or sorry, the sidewalk trail kind of snakes through that, not just like one big line that you would typically see.
Okay. Also, on, uh, what Commissioner Belzer was talking about on the, uh, walkability, you know, I hear what you both are saying. Um, I think walkability in a community has more than just whether there's a sidewalk, but whether you're, uh, weaving in and out of exhaust to give that a sense of a community. You had talked about a main street feel and I don't see a main street feel. And I do see two projects because as you were talking about this, you divided it up. It seems to divide into two very distinct pieces. But, um, I appreciate what you're saying on that walkability. And I think the fountain's probably a very good feature that would encourage people to be around there. But, um, I wouldn't call it real walkable, given the amount of cars and traffic.
I appreciate that. And one quick, I guess, question I made on my end is what do you, when you say two distinct projects, what are you referring to?
Well, it looks like there's an apartment project and there's a retail project.
Oh, okay. Um, so again, I think that goes back to kind of us taking two things. One, what Oxford Promenade has. Um, but our retail and restaurants are integrated into those mixed-use buildings. And then also, we are trying to create like a little bit of sense of separation. Again, it's that, what, it's that delicate balance of are you a fully integrated mixed-use community versus how much do you want to have your apartment right next to someone's restaurant or piece like that? So, again, it's a delicate balance and so we.
Sure, and I understand that. Uh, and then last thing I have, along with Commissioner Belzer, who asked about, uh, working with the planning staff. The planning staff is our professional group that, uh, is, I think, our first line of quality control. And I would think that, uh, being able to revisit i- is a reasonable thing to be able to get this together before it comes before a group like this. So, I, I, I very much value the opinion of our planning department and what they say.
Yeah, likewise. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Franze.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just one follow-up question on the parking. Um, so it looks like the letter that we have in our file recommends one point four-one parking stalls per unit. And you're requesting a deviation of one point five. I don't know if staff would be supportive of that, but, uh, to Commissioner McGurn's point about the interior green spaces, if you were to request a lower deviation there and reduce the parking internal to ma- make bigger green spaces and gathering spaces in between the buildings, that might be something that would be viewed favorably.
Okay. Um, yeah, my memory is going one point three-six, but maybe that's what we got approved on one thirty-five. I've, we've done so many mixed-use developments in Leewood, my deviations on parking might be mixed together. Um, but if that is the case and we are at one point four-one or one point five, then I don't see any reason that we would be against that.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there's been a lot of conversation about Oxford, uh, Promenade. Uh, one of the distinctions between this plan and Oxford pla- uh, Promenade is the number and, uh, and, um, and use of the properties that are along the, uh, the one hundred and thirty-fifth street frontage.
Yes.
In Oxford Promenade, the buildings are bigger. Uh, and also, there are no drive-throughs at Oxford Promenade. Whereas here, you've got, I'm going to call them seven pad sites and four drive-throughs. And that is somewhat of a concern to me because that looks a little congested, maybe less than optimal for the quality that we're trying to achieve in terms of the appearance of the one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor. Was any thought given to maybe lightening up just a little bit and, uh, reducing the density of those pad sites, maybe by reducing one or two and leaving some additional green space so it doesn't look quite so congested?
Yes, there's a couple of different pieces there. Um, I think two things, um, I think we talked about a little bit. The longer buildings, sometimes they're more difficult to get going. What we want to make sure we also have is a viable development, which I know we've talked about. Um, and one thing about the drive-throughs is, I mean, there's been a lot of change in what a drive-through lane is for a restaurant, whether it's a mobile order pickup. You know, that's not saying everything here is going to be a, a super high-end coffee shop. We're not going to have four coffee shops with stacking out the wazoo. It could be bank drive-throughs or it could just be a restaurant that has a mobile pickup. Um, our office building is next to Jack Stack. They don't have a drive-through, but there's a window that people pull around back, but it's not a drive-through building. It's a sit-down restaurant with a pickup lane. Um, so we want to make sure that when we're, what we're proposing kind of has that flexibility. And also, it's not something that was on the Oxford Promenade plan. And that's why we think it's a valued use here because we do believe that there is a market for it. And while their plan doesn't have it, we thought it was a great opportunity to provide that, again, diversified option for retailers, restaurants in the area.
All right, thank you.
I'll just, uh, point out to you that drive-throughs do require special use permit. So, even once, um, should this preliminary development plan be approved, um, as you're looking at any of these pad sites that show a drive-through, when they come through for a final development plan, would also need a special use permit. So, that adds a, um, a little bit more scrutiny to that when you would be taking a look at a specific drive-through spot within any development.
Yeah, and one last thing to add to that is, again, this is preliminary for flexibility. If we get, come in and there's, everyone says, hey, I want to sit down in a restaurant there and no drive-through, we will more than happily put the sit-down restaurant there with no drive-through. But at this preliminary stage, again, it's all about that flexibility and marketability. And we feel that, um, this provides that. And Rick, I think we've had one more thing to add.
Yeah, I, I was going to say exactly, exactly what you said. And I also want to add, you know, this one hundred and thirty-fifth street is a six-lane street. So, in a six-lane street or will be shortly, y- you expect to see a few drive-throughs out there. Uh, um, but I can't, we have to put them in as a flexible thing up front where they could be or how they'd work. Um, and so that's why I have them, like you said, if we get other restaurants or other uses, we're happy to do it. And as amount of retail goes, um, that, yeah, no, no. Anyway, I think we got just the right amount that it's, uh, meets the percentages and is sellable because we don't want to have ground just sitting there vacant because we've got too much.
And one more thing, I mean, obviously, again, the, the density overall, building frontage-wise, I think we are actually very similar. We are just more broken up. And they do have on that southwest corner of Oxford Promenade, there is that kind of like C-store type use that does have the parking kind of surrounding that. So, I mean, that does provide a step back, but then you have parking along one hundred and thirty-fifth that we didn't want. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the applicant? Okay, I have, I have two, uh, not to beat a drive-through dead horse, uh, but I'm going to. Can you please put up, um, the, uh, photo lengthwise of just your development? Okay.
That's all.
So, just, just to be clear, when we're talking about, I know this is preliminary plan. When you're talking about the drive-throughs.
Mm-hmm.
I'm counting four?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Would you like me to circle?
My second question is in regards to traffic flow. And we've talked about the parking garages on the apartments. We, we've talked about the retail. And I can see there's one, two, three, four, five entrances or exits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The one hundred and thirty-thirty, one hundred and thirty-third street, uh, exits and entrances, the one to the west is in and out. It goes both directions, correct?
Yes, the one on the west side is full access.
Okay. And the one on the right side, uh, on the east side is right in and right out?
Correct.
Okay. And the barrier, I assume, would be curved one way or the other?
I don't know if I have any answer to that off the top of my head. I might have to defer to.
Do you mean that kind of little island there?
Right.
Yeah, so it would be designed, um, so that they, yeah, curved, so you could only turn right in. And, I mean, I guess someone could just decide to kind of do a loop-de-loop around it, but.
The one on Mission by Tide, I've seen multiple times people coming out of that and going, making a left turn. And that is not designed for that.
Typically, we have more of like a more hard like Y configuration is what we would usually have happen there. Um, while I can't stop people from breaking the law, we try not to let them do it.
All right. I'm sure Leewood police are not situated there trying to get people. Uh, the Fontana, both directions, correct?
Yes, Fontana is a full access. Let me go, I had a slide that I think ax- uh, outlined the full access. There it was.
Okay, so there's a full access on Mission, uh, or is that right in, right out?
So, yellow on this diagram is full access and then red is right in, right out. We had previously looked at trying to get a three-quarter turn on the Mission Road there instead of just right in, right out, but working with, I think, Public Works Traffic, that was, um, not approved. So, we have three right in, right outs and two full access points.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, one, one final question. You can get from one hundred and thirty-third street to one hundred and thirty-fifth, but you would have to jog around. Uh, there is access, correct?
Yes, there is actually full access north-south. It is not just kind of a straight shot. Again, that's for two things, for traffic speeds, uh, reducing speed and having those offsets.
Okay. All right, that's it for me. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, Patrick.
Appreciate your time, everybody.
All right, this case does require a public hearing. I will open up the public, public hearing if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on case seventy-two twenty-five. Please step forward. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience. Next time, we'll have a coffee machine in the back working for.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Gashwin. I'm one of the newest residents of Leewood. Just celebrated my ninety-day anniversary a couple of days ago.
Sir, I'm sorry, before you continue, can you please give us your address?
Pardon me?
Can you please give us your address?
One-three-eight-one-six, one hundred and thirty-eight sixteen Howe Drive.
Thank you, please continue.
Howe rhymes with Lowe's, H-O-W-E. Uh, it's in Villa Milano, uh, in Odo Development. So, uh, I think I'm a poster child for developments like this. I'm one of the baby boomers who. I'm one of the baby boomers who was no longer ready for home ownership and had made enough equity to take it out and wasn't ready for tall grass. So Villa Milano seems to be a good project, and I think there'll be other people like me that would move into this project once it's developed. Leewood has had a long history of preferring home ownership, and I understand that, but I think there's a trend, particularly among baby boomers, to want to go to rentals. Rentals no longer have the same negative context they might have a decade or so ago. And when I was selling my house, I spent a lot of time looking for a suitable rental, anywhere from South Kansas City all the way to Lee's Summit, west all the way to Overland Park, not Olathe, I wasn't gonna go that far west, but Villa Milano was by far the best, and partially because it's an Odo development. Rick has spent a lot of time caring about green space. I think you see a lot of green space in this project. You know, the other thing that's interesting that I didn't mention about living in Leewood is that I had the privilege of being the interim city administrator here from June of '22 to February of '23, after Scott's sudden heart attack, there was a need, and of course Diane succeeded me. And I always had a lot of respect for the staff that worked here in Leewood. I thought we had high-quality people. Seven times prior to being the interim city administrator here, I was an interim CEO at a hospital in another city, different places, it was part of my consulting career. This was by far the easiest job, should have been the hardest, but it was easiest, and it's partially because you have high-quality people working here. And when I was preparing my thoughts of what I might share with you tonight, I thought, you know, one of the things that you count on is the recommendations of your staff. They put a lot of time and effort, they meet with your developers to try to iron out all the issues you've been talking about tonight, and I would think it would be relatively rare that you would go against one of their recommendations. That was before about an hour ago. But I do think there's some reasons why you should consider not accepting their recommendation on this project. They had to have had a hard time coming to the decision they did. Because it met all the requirements of the LDO, the thing they rested on was some of the 135th Street guidelines, and, you know, how important are the subjective natures of those guidelines is something that this group will have to make a decision on. I think this project is beautiful. I think it is classy, I think it is something that Leewood stands for, and I think that's part of what will go into your decision-making. In one of my other interim jobs, when I was another city manager of a different Johnson County community, I can remember the city council debating various development issues. And one time, they were, they had a great offer for a vacant piece of land, and they were sometimes quibbling over what I thought were minor things. And I thought, how many developers have you seen that have come in and have asked for you to fund their whole project? And here you had a developer that had all cash, it was a bank. And I said, not only do they have the $600,000 they're offering you, they have another $600,000 to put into this project. That's something most of the developers you haven't seen. So I think Rick Odo and his team have a proven track record. When I was here, the most controversial project was East Village, and probably far more controversial than some of the projects you've seen, but it finally passed, and it's coming along, and Rick was telling me that several of the new buildings that have gone up there, the single-family homes and the villas, have already received awards from, like, the parade of homes-type people. So one of the nuances that your staff can't really look at, but you can, is this gonna be a quality development? Not just does it follow the LDO, but is it high-class Leewood quality? And I think the answer is yes, and I think that should be one of the reasons that you would consider going forward for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on case 7225? Mr. Chair. Commissioner Block. Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second Commissioner Franze, on favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Public hearing's closed. The applicant like to have any rebuttal before we move on to discussion?
I think that Patrick said a lot of good things, and I appreciate that. The only thing I ask you to do is just use the same standards and be fair with me that you have with other developers, and I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Brings us up to discussion. Anyone like to have any comments on case 7225? Mr. Block.
I think there are a lot of positives to this application, maybe just a couple of them, the structured parking, or at least being underground, and not having the surface parking is positive in my mind. I think the distance from the north, although there is a four-story building, I think that it was shown well that, you know, that no one's really gonna be looking at anybody's back window. I think some of the other cases, maybe even the East Village, for example, because it's so close, I think that was a bigger concern, it was closer to the houses. Things is a bit further away. I think the buffer around the perimeter is good, is even better than the project that keeps being referenced to the south. I do kind of share the same concern, maybe that was brought up by some others, with the, it does look different than the project to the south, and unfortunately, my memory of that case, I usually can remember these pretty well, and I don't remember it as well, but I agree, comparing them, they are very, very similar. I think that, you know, while I put a lot into the 135th Community Plan, even though I know it's, you know, we've not followed it fully in the past, that it's, you know, it's getting aged, it obviously needs an update, I do think that the three objectives that were brought up are somewhat subjective. I do, you know, think that, you know, that as I think the applicant had stated, Patrick stated, that I do believe that these, in a form, maybe not as clear as other projects, but I think that they do comply with these. And then maybe just lastly, I think that the rendering, you know, looking at our, at our packet, I don't know that we had the rendering of the fountain, and I do agree with the public comment and just, that it really does look very, very nice. The fountain is, you know, that thing that's gonna differentiate, I guess, this project from others in other parts of the city, potentially, at least in this corridor. So for all those reasons, I won't use the word "not horrible" this time, that was a bad choice of word.
Sorry about that.
But that I, I think overall, I think it is a good project, you know, but like I've said in others, I mean, is it perfect, you know, three drive-throughs, two drive-throughs, no drive-throughs? I mean, I, you know, I appreciate that this is just a preliminary plan, you know, as was mentioned, I think that, you know, those will require a special use permit if those in fact turn out to be viable or presented to us, so overall, I, you know, I think this is a quality project, which I will vote in favor of.
Thank you, Commissioner Block. Commissioner Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are parts of this plan that I think are just absolutely terrific. I think the apartments, the roundabout, the little park areas that are just to the south of the roundabout are just great, and I have, I have high regard for that design. I think it's just terrific and a beautiful amenity for Leewood. I am a little bit, no, I'm more than just a little bit concerned about the 135th Street frontage. It just looks a little congested to me. I don't want to, it's just reminiscent of some of the other thoroughfares in the metro that have, that are just stacked up with drive-throughs and restaurants, and I'm just, I'm just not quite there with that part of the plan, so that's my comment, I haven't made a decision, but it's a tough one for me, so, thank you.
Mr. Carburg.
Similar to Commissioner Fishman, I think there are a lot of neat parts of this plan. I probably don't see it as cohesive as some might, which I tried to express in the two project idea, and the walkability. Similar to the gentleman who spoke, though, I got a lot of admiration for our staff, and I really put a lot of stock into what they say. I think it would have a much stronger sense with us if it came out of our staff after a revisit, looking at what it could be, what could be done to reconcile those things, and then go to the governing body with a much firmer direction. And I'm not decided yet.
Thank you, Commissioner Carburg. Any other comments? Commissioner Franze.
Yeah, I would echo what Commissioner Block said. I like the development, I like that it looks like a high-quality development, really like the below-ground parking, and understand and appreciate the expense to do that, but I think it greatly improves things. I appreciate kind of some of the more, maybe smaller details, the which entrances are full access and which are right in, right out, seem really well-thought-out. The angled parking directly to the south of the residential buildings, I think is important, and I don't think was discussed enough, but I think that provides a lot less congestion and gives you some more certainty about which direction cars are going and which way you're looking and getting in and out of the area. I think the fountain looks great. I would encourage looking at the internal surface parking in the residential buildings and seeing if there's a way to reduce that some and increase that green space. I think even just two or three spaces on either side that were removed and expanded could do wonders for what that would look like on the inside there. But I'm supportive of the plan, I like the development and appreciate it, and I'm gonna be in favor of it.
Any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McGurn.
I would agree with everything that's been said, it's kind of a toss-up to some extent, and I appreciate the fact that so much progress has been made with the staff and by the staff, because I do think that it has merits, and a lot of what people have said from a positive standpoint, I would agree with. I, there's a part of me that wishes we were continuing, ironically, a second case, but because if they came back and they said that they would make the transition with more green space in the middle and less parking in between the two buildings, and potentially remove one of the buildings, because I agree with the statement that was made, you know, you can drive down Knoll and a number of other streets and see a whole bunch of restaurants lined up and drive-throughs lined up, and it's not terribly attractive. Now, I do think there's a considerable, it appears to be a considerable amount of trees and green space that will hide all of that at some point, you know, but that might take a decade or whatever. So I think, I think there's enhancements that need to be made, and it's potentially, just like East Village, there, we went through two years of meetings and lots and lots of discussion, and it continually got better and better as it went. So I think there's a, a part of me that wishes we were getting that case tonight that would have been more like those two or three enhancements. So those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Block. Seeing the time, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting another 30 minutes.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bellzer. All in favor of continuing the meeting for another 30 minutes? To our final time limit of 10 o'clock, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We are extending another 30 minutes. Commissioner Fulman. No, I'm sorry, Mr. Odo, we're done with applicant comments.
I'm gonna...
Commissioner Bellzer.
So I agree with Commissioner McGurn, I'm sort of kind of here and there. I also value our staff's opinion, and I know and understand the amount of time that has gone into this by both parties. I see lots of merits in this project, and I feel like we're so close, and between staff and the developer, and I just feel like there's maybe a couple of tweaks that need to happen that staff can move forward with an approval, recommendation for approval for this case, which I think would be easier for us to not be so on the fence, and then to move forward to the governing body. So I'm, I feel like I'm on a bit of a seesaw right now.
Commissioner Bellzer. My comments, you know, I value the staff's input tremendously in working with them over the years, and I've gone against their recommendations, I vote against their recommendations, I've gone with them more than not, but in certain instances, I've gone against it. However, this case, I feel strongly that their recommendation of denial, they have a lot of good valid points to it, and I don't think we're there either. My big issue with the development, and granted, it's a very well-thought-out, good proposal, however, that 135th Street part, like Commissioner Fishman, it's, that's where I cannot get over. I cannot get over four drive-throughs on our 135th Street. Overland Park may have drive-throughs, Leewood does not. Leewood has, I can, probably on one hand, I know we have the McDonald's, which has been there for eons, it's got a couple, a bank.
Starbucks.
Starbucks, and that's really about it. And if you're gonna put drive-throughs, you're not gonna wanna screen them, because that's how you get people in, is through the signage. And what we're talking about is a mixed-use development. In a mixed-use development, you have a sense of place community. There's nothing that screams "we don't want you" than a drive-through. People are using the drive-throughs to come in and to get out, and the people in the development are not using those drive-throughs. They want coffeehouses, they want restaurants. I'll give a shout-out to one of our old commissioners, he wants a brew house, you know, and a bar that he could go to. So with that, I'm not there on this yet, I think it's a great start, but I cannot give approval to send this on at this time. Well, everyone spoke, which is unusual for us. Commissioner Fishman.
Would it, would it be inappropriate to suggest to the applicant, given the comments of the planning commissioners, to ask the planning commissioners to postpone their vote and continue this case in order to give the applicant time to continue to collaborate with the staff, in the hopes that maybe they could, the staff and the applicant could bring back a proposal that would earn the recommendation for approval?
Well, you can certainly do that, we can, we have three options, we can approve, we can deny or continue, basically, so that is an option if someone puts forth a motion.
Well, you know, I would encourage the applicant to consider that.
Well, they don't have a choice if we're, if we're doing that.
We have to, I'm sorry, did I misunderstand?
Yeah, you can make a motion to continue it, Commissioner Fishman, you can do that as a motion.
Before we continue on, I've been neglecting Ms. Nadelman all evening on the screen there. I apologize. Do you have any, any comments?
No, no additional comments right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I am on the fence, and would likely vote no.
Okay, well, that's a comment, so. All right, with that, any other comments about the commission? Okay, we'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Franze.
I move that we continue case 72-25, Mission West MXD, to the October 28th Planning Commission regular meeting.
Second. Second Commissioner Bellzer, any discussion on the motion?
Well, maybe just to clarify, I don't, at least in the last one, do we want it to be a date certain? a date certain?
Yeah, you do not have to specify a date for a continuance. You can just recommend that it be continued, and then staff can continue to work with the applicant, and we can bring it forward when we would feel that were to place.
I'll revise the motion to not state a specific date.
Sorry, maybe you did, I just wanted, that's what we gave the last one.
Second, again.
Second, again, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of continuing case 7225, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Case 7225 is continued.
Hey, I would just ask, so staff and the applicant can maybe have a little bit of direction, if there's anything specific that any planning commissioners would like to see us work on with the applicant prior to bringing it back for you.
Besides the comments we already made.
I mean, if there's anything in particular in addition that you want to see or not see, or...
I think we've, I think we've all said in our comments. No, sir, I'm sorry. Okay, a couple of other things on, wanted to bring up. Do we have a work session for Tuesday, October 14th?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. We do have a planning commission work session scheduled for October 14th to be held here at City Hall, starting at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any updates on the comprehensive plan, LDO, project?
So, we have had a couple of pop-up events. We've had, so we had a pop-up event at the Touch Truck, where we had an excellent, um, um, thank you, it's late, an excellent turnout. And I believe last we heard about about, what, 1,400 people, is that correct, that came through Touch a Truck? And so, staff was able to really have great conversations with people. We also were at the Leewood, the Taste of Leewood, a couple of weekends ago, and I can't tell you how many hundreds of people were through there, but we had an excellent, lots of great conversations, and got a lot of great feedback about what ma, what people think makes, makes Leewood great. We have our next pop-up event, is the Into the Night in two weeks, is that correct? So, we'll be...
The 10th, I think, is that next? It's October 10th.
Thank you. So we'll be...
Whatever day today is.
Julie and I will be at the, that pop-up event as well.
And we have gotten back the initial drafts of the 135th Street market study that was part of this. So, I know we haven't had a lot of time to dig into that as staff, but we've gotten those back, and we'll be starting to take a look at that and meeting with the applicant to go over those results that were part of that, and so we can start sharing out that information as we are able to get through it.
Anything else? Okay, I would just like to make one comment for everyone here. Thank you very much. This was a very long, difficult meeting to get through. I've seen stuff here tonight that I have not seen on my time here on the commission that we've had to deal with. So, thank you for staff, thank you, Marcy, for going through your, your, your rules to keep us on track. But I know a lot of you weren't here for East Village, so this is, it was not on par with that, but thank you all for your attention tonight and sticking with us. And we'll see you October 14th. We are adjourned.